In the Pledge of Allegiance. It's out on the harbor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Okay, we will call the roll. Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Santoria not yet present. Mayor Protem Friedman.
Here.
Mayor Rouse.
Here. All right, very good. And if we could read the item into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we have a work session where the subject is the Council Strategic Planning Session, and the recommendation is that council participates in a facilitated workshop to provide additional input into a new citywide strategic plan.
And do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
We do, and we're going to take public comment at the beginning of the meeting for folks who are here, and then if there's anyone that comes at the end, we'll have another round if folks have not had a chance to.
Today's public comment is specifically on the agenda item.
Specifically on this agenda item.
Okay.
Sure. Go ahead.
Our first speaker will be Carrie Weber.
Okay, wonderful. We'll give Kelly a chance to get set up.
Do you have the time, Ms. McAdoo, for the timing? Thank you.
Yes. Three minutes. Hi, everyone. My name is Carrie Weber, and I'm going to just start by saying I apologize for my tone in advance because I'm very impassioned about this subject. First, I'll just start by saying it's quite hard for people who work like nine to five to be at these types of meetings. I was able to be there at the council meeting last Tuesday because I took time off, and today I happened to work from home, and so this is my lunch. So I just urge you to have, when you have important meetings like today's that affect a lot of people and a lot of working-class people, if you could consider having them, for public comment at least, in the after-work hours. So I'm impassioned today to talk about rent stabilization. I know we talked, you all talked about it on Tuesday, and I'm just here to say it's so, it's like a five-alarm fire. We cannot wait, we cannot drag our feet on this any further because people will be displaced. We heard the landlords, and what they kind of seemingly said was a bit threatening, like, "Well, if you decide to go this way, we're going to start evicting people tomorrow." And I think it was really taken to heart by people, and it feels scary. I work for UCSB. That's my primary job. I also have a second job to be able to afford to live here. I work on the weekends in hospitality. I'm not the anomaly. It's quite expensive to live here. This weekend, I was tabling for the Santa Barbara Tenants Union and spoke to many people that shared the same view. They have a role. One person I spoke to was a city of Galita employee, and then also worked hospitality on the weekend. So I see up on here, we have Strengthen Housing and Community Services. It's so important. I would love to see council put all of their energy onto that one item. And honestly, I care more about the housing affordability than the production. Why? Because the production means you're going to put new housing in, which I believe we need, but those folks that might be tenants in the new housing and production won't have the same protections as those that are existing already. They won't have the Just Cause Act, they won't have these things that protect them. So for me, looking at the affordability, and I'm really encouraging y'all to spend as much time and energy on that as you can. I have 41 seconds, y'all. So I want to keep living here. I want my fellow nurses, nannies, to be able to continue to work here. So I'm going to end it there, and thank you for listening.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Anna Arcey.
Okay, so Anna Arcey. So I'm the Policy Advocate for Cause and also part of District One. And at the last strategic planning meeting, one of our base members missed a whole day of work because of these meetings. And we share this with the city and also still continue to urge to please have these meetings during a time when community can actually assist. I had to also come in in person. I don't have a car right now, so thank you for my ride because if not, I would have had to walk all the way over here, which probably need the exercise. But I also had to work my second job this weekend as well. So it's not very convenient and it's not very accessible for people. And also, in the section about housing, the landlord lobby has stated, they stated exactly what they plan to do, which is making it crystal clear if protections are passed, they'll raise rents and they'll displace thousands of working families in our cities. We're not asking for miracles to pass it tomorrow, but we're asking for you is to choose not to delay and choose to continue to act. And if you let bad faith evictions continue and rent increases continue and go on challenge, the results will be massive evictions for working families. So, and super random, I don't know how much time I have left, but on economic vitality, I would super suggest you to connect with Weave. They're great about attracting small business plans. Also, Vada with facilitating and supporting in the arts. Vada and Santa Barbara High School, getting those youth stakeholders. And then there was, sorry, sorry, I should have just added my notes ready. And then AmeriCorps program would also be really great for strengthening services to support diverse populations. What's great about them is that it's not a full-on contract. They would pay, based on what their federal funding is, and then you all would pay the rest. So save some costs and get some community engagement and prioritizing youth programs, including the Police Activities League and explore more organizational partnerships in those. I do know the Police Activity Leagues during the summer, they provide a lot of really great resources, so I'm totally in support for that. And then for the PATHS Shelter, making sure that there are beds specific for transitional-age youth and queer communities as well, once you're in that stage of planning. So yeah, that's, yeah. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, next speaker, please.
And our final speaker is Scott Forman.
Hello, everyone. Dear Mayor and council members, I wish that I had heard Carrie speak before, and I would have given her my time because I think what she said was so important, really, really from the heart, and how scary people are. So I wrote something, I'll have to read it. So I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to provide input for rent stabilization. I said something at the last council meeting that rents in Santa Barbara have gone up over 65% in the last five years, while the cost of living has gone up only 25%. I think that's really a pretty stark number, and there's a 30% guideline for how much money people should spend on rent. And with the current median prices for one- and two-bedroom apartments, it's $114,000 a year for a one-bedroom and $154,000 a year for a two-bedroom. I mean, even very highly-paid professionals, it's going to stretch their budgets. So I'm asking that the council take urgent action on rent stabilization ordinance, and a proposed ordinance was submitted last Tuesday, and it included, I think, many ideas that other cities in California have used for rent stabilization, and I hope that the city manager can use them to come up to speed as quickly as possible. I've spoken with councilmember Harmon, and I'm hopeful that something eventually will be passed, but I'm concerned about how long it will take because many tenants cannot afford another rent increase of 5% plus CPI, which is going to be close to 3%. That's an 8% increase in already high numbers. And then I think that councilmember Sneddon said last time that this has been in the discussion queue for seven years, so the time for action is really way overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
Is there anyone else who wants to speak under public comment?
Okay. With that, we'll close public comment. And Ms. McAdoo, I think you'd like to make an opening statement.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and we're grateful to be back here again with our friends from Raftellus, Nancy and Janay. I just, to speak to the comments about the timing of this, this is still a working session. The final plan, final draft plan, will come back to a regular council meeting where there'll be the ability for Zoom participation. We have had a number of community focus groups, and so we'll talk about that today a little bit. So there have been alternate times for folks to participate, and again, this is simply another working session and not the final, there's my time. Not the final opportunity for input, to say the least. So you'll hear, we're going to walk through what we've been doing since the last time we all came together, when the council sort of confirmed the strategic priorities, and we heard a lot of feedback about not having substance. So we're hopeful today we'll have some substance for the council to dig into. And we have, the executive team and with input from those community focus groups we've held, really have tried to flesh out the objectives under each of the strategic priority areas. And in front of you, which was also attached to your packet, you'll see some draft initiatives to accomplish each of those objectives in year one, two, and three of the plan. I would highlight year one also includes things we are currently working on and will basically take us through all of fiscal year '27. So it basically runs from now through fiscal year '27. And so what we're really trying to get from the council today is consensus on the priorities and the objectives, and then we are happy to walk through the initiatives and answer questions. We're not going to go through each in depth, but if there's ones that councilmembers have questions about, need further explanation, our team, our department heads are here to answer those questions along with some other key staff. And we also want to hear from the council if you feel like we're missing anything. And so this will help us as we start to develop the budget for this coming fiscal year. Obviously, a lot of constraints that we're looking at, but I think this is helpful for us to be able to start to prioritize the staff workload. And I want to highlight that, again, this is, we used the iceberg analogy, I think, once before. This is the stuff that the council sees above the waterline. There are probably over 1,000 employees who are doing the day-to-day work to keep the city running. They're mowing the grass, they're cleaning the waterfront, they're setting this room up, and you don't really see them on a day-to-day basis. And so we have, I say, there's probably about 60 to 80 staff that work on these initiatives throughout the organization and also supervise that day-to-day work that's happening. And so just want to make sure that we're keeping that in mind as we think about how much everyone can work on at once. And so that's the goal, is to make sure that we're all in sync and alignment between the council's expectations and priorities and staff. And I want to particularly thank Nancy and Janay for facilitating and leading us through this process, also Barbara Anderson, who's been key. There she is over there in the corner. And then all of our department heads and other staff who've contributed to the work plan. It's been a really, I think, great sort of exercise together, and so really looking forward to diving into it with you today. And with that, I will turn it over to Nancy.
Great, all right, thanks. You can see, as evidenced in the work plan draft document you have before you, a lot has happened since we were last together. So this afternoon, again, as Kelly mentioned, study session. This is a time to explore the content, to put your fingers on it, to make sure you're feeling comfortable with the content and the direction, identify things that are missing. This then will be finalized after we have your input in order to prepare a final strategic plan that then you will have an opportunity in a public setting in the evening meeting to review and adopt. That is the next step, so hands-on activity as we make our way through here today. So here are the objectives, and I've moved this over here so I could try to see it and not keep turning around. But really, we want to bring you up to speed on what has happened since we were last together in June. The work of your efforts and the topics and the issues before you continue to come through, just as all the work with council has as well. So we have been helping to facilitate that forward movement, and the goal of bringing this back to you today with the depth, hopefully, that you are asking for in terms of details and what does this look like in action. Nice words. What does this look like? What are we going to do? So that's what we're going to spend our time on today. So we will do it truly as a study session. We see we have all of the framework elements here on the wall. We will be asking during our final time together to do some prioritization from collectively what are the highest priorities at the objective level, but largely informed by the detail of the initiatives, the programs, the projects that are included on the work plan. So that's what we are going to be making our way through during our time together. Settle in, relax, hold on tight, and we'll have a good conversation as we make our way through. So here's an update, just as a reminder, on the arc of this process. We began some time ago with interviews with each member of council to understand those issues, those topics that are of keen importance to you individually and therefore collectively. And so we did that work early on. We have, since that time, facilitated a workshop with the executive team. We came and we facilitated a workshop with all of you. We've done a survey of staff. We have conducted community focus groups. We'll share the themes from those so you understand the issues and the topics that really resonated for the public. And then we reconvened with the department heads, really based on that initial framework that came through our time together. And so it's from there that it started to filter into that next level of work, which is what would that look like in a year-one, year-two framework, recognizing the many things that are always underway in an organization such as yours. But hopefully, that gives some answers to the question of, well, what are we funding? What are we doing? Also, I think importantly, when we were meeting with the department heads, we were asking questions about those efforts that are underway or anticipated so that there's a dose of reality. One of the things that came through crystal clear and was echoed in the community meetings we had was, what are we going to do? We want action. We want to see something that has occurred as a result of this effort, that we can celebrate progress and then ultimately results. And so part of that is making sure that it's grounded in the resources that are available, both financially and then also staff-wise. So the initiatives, the programs, projects, all of those elements that are in the work plan reflect that. And so it's not a wish list, it's a reality check. So that's what we want to spend our time on today. So that's where we are. Following our time together today, we will synthesize the input that you provide, and we will start putting together a recommended strategic plan. That will come back before you, after it has gone through Kelly and her team, to make sure that it is the roadmap that will serve the city, that's something that can serve as both a North Star and a touch point. And so touching in both places is really important, and it informs so many things. It informs your resource allocation, it informs how you make choices on how you're going to spend your time and energy. So that's what's on the horizon, and it's at that point, then, that we step to the side and we let the magic happen with your very talented team. Okay, so when we were together last, this slide might look familiar, we shared what we had heard around the hopes for this process. And so I wanted to bring that back into the room because I think it's good to help ground us on those things that matter. So first of all, establishing a united, long-term vision, so that you have clear direction, you have clear focus and expectations about the future. What are those things that matter most, reflecting on your community but also as a lector body? You wanted a clear, actionable, bold, underlined, italicized plan. You wanted something that wasn't just nice words, that didn't just express what you want, but also help to create a roadmap so you can see progress in that direction. So tangible actions, very important. And then importantly, and this was particularly important to Kelly and the team, is really using this as an opportunity to strengthen collaboration and the culture of the organization. And so really grounding it in clarity around vision and purpose, but also just around mission and why we're all here. And so it presents a great opportunity for all of these elements, and so I'd just like to bring it back into the room as a reminder of what we're striving for, and today, we're going to ask the question, are we getting close? Right? Are we getting there? Okay. Here are the elements of the strategic plan framework. So just to, again, remind us of the terms, this is not new, but just to get, for everybody's benefit, the same conversation in the room. So your vision. The vision is succinct and aspirational. It reflects who you want to be as a community and as an organization in the future. And so it touches on those key attributes that people value the most, but not with being long prose that nobody can remember. We want it to be something that really speaks to the organization but also reflects the community. Your strategic priorities, we have four of them that we have landed on thus far. We will affirm those today. So these are those high-level, the big rocks, the big areas of focus that define how you want to prioritize and spend your time and energy beyond all of the day-to-day efforts of the city, which there are many. And so we have four. Stimulate economic and community vitality. Enhance community resiliency and safety. Strengthen housing and community services. And ensure a thriving city organization. And so that's where we're going to dive in earlier. So these are the broad buckets. Broad buckets that provide us that touch point of where we're headed. The objectives, also listed here on the wall but also contained in your packet, are the things that have to go well in order to achieve your strategic priorities. And so they start to filter us in to a clarity of understanding of what we're going to spend our time on, but it's not the level of detail that you have then in the city's work plan, which really speaks to what are we doing? What does that look like in action? Those on this slide are your initiatives. Those are the things that either in year one, year two, or year three, the city will be expending extra resources. So this is above and beyond what is necessary for the regular day-to-day of the city. So these are the things you'll be spending time on. So that's our framework that we bring into the room to make sure we're all speaking the same language. So community engagement. Janay and I had the pleasure of meeting with a number of your community members. And so, Janay, you want to give a little bit of a view on the focus group?
Yeah. So Nancy and I were here in early September to conduct focus groups with members of your community over the course of two days. We had four focus groups attended by over 50 members of the community, and we sort of had these four buckets of areas of expertise, if you will, that these community members aligned with as far as leaders in the business community, leaders in the environmental community and housing and areas that are really important to focus on. So they dove into those topic areas from your strategic priorities, but all of the focus groups did get to touch each area and provide their feedback. So when we were here with you, oh gosh, June, May?
Yep, June.
Before summer, when we were here with you, we kind of left that meeting with a draft framework, and that's what we took out to the community to get their input and their feedback on it. What we found was there was general overall agreement with the strategic priorities with those four large buckets that you had come up with. They resonated with those community members, and they found that these are indeed the things that they would like to see the community and the city focus on. There was a bit of skepticism around action, feeling that there was conversations that had been had previously about some of these goals and these things that you would like to achieve, but they weren't seeing the needle moving forward in that direction. And I think that's why it's really important, as Nancy's already touched on and as Kelly has mentioned as well, having this actionable plan, these steps to show this is how we're going to move forward and those milestones that you can reflect and communicate to the community. And that was one of those, the fourth bullet point there, is there needs to be a focus on specific actions. That was something that the community wanted to let you know as well. There was a recognition of building on the work that's already been done. Community members have expressed that they are witnessing things that are indeed moving forward. Maybe it's not always at the speed with which we like, of course, but making sure that there's an honor and a recognition of work that's already underway, and I think you'll see that in the spreadsheet you have there of things that are already taking place in this first year. There was a lot of conversation about being bold in ideas and actions, wanting to see things perhaps done differently, new things, new approaches, different ways to achieve some of these goals that perhaps maybe haven't been discussed in the past, or anything under that kind of realm the community was willing to give you the permission to go forth and have some of these new innovative ideas. There was a lot of talk about the interconnectedness of each of these areas as well. Obviously, these don't stand alone. If you don't have a thriving organization and the people who are going to do the work, then it's difficult to have economic vitality and this and that. So there was an understanding that throughout these four buckets, there's going to be a lot of overlap and a lot of connectedness in actually moving these forward. And as we meet with teams, as we move forward in the implementation, I think we'll start to see that even more, where there's going to be some interdepartmental connection there. There was some conversation, too, about each of these, making sure that the plan reflects the city's diversity as well, that that is shown in the projects that are being done and the conversations that are being had. So that was something that we heard resonating throughout those meetings as well. And then one of the biggest things we took away from the community meetings is the appreciation for being involved. The focus groups were great. There was a lot of engagement. There was a lot of really good, robust conversation that happened, and that was good to see from our perspective. You do have a very involved community. I'm sure you all knew that already, but it's nice to come in and we can see that as well. And there was a lot of passion behind it, again, really good conversations and a true appreciation for being involved and being extended the invitation to come in and participate and get their fingerprints on this process, to be able to see that in the final plan. So once we had those meetings, we took some of this feedback, and we had met with the city's project team in early September as well. And that's where we refined this framework a little bit to make sure that we're incorporating these ideas, the concerns of the community and what their desires are as well. So that's the revised version of the framework that you're going to be seeing as we work through this today.
Yeah. They were really, they were great meetings. They were really engaged. One of the things that, you're kind of dovetailing off, they liked being invited to participate and to be asked meant a lot, but also they offered the reminder that they're invested, just like you're all invested. And so to the degree that there are opportunities to engage and take advantage of the great mini-organizations and people in the community, they want to be partners to this, to move things forward.
Yeah. I say that's the key word, is we heard a lot about partnerships, about the connections that people have and the ways that they can offer help and partner with the community in some of these initiatives and objectives.
Totally. Yeah, that's good. Any questions on the engagement activities? Probably not surprises. I mean, you'd probably have a finger on the pulse already, but it was nice for us to feel like it was validating very much so in terms of all of the work that had led. It was consistent. There were no major shifts or outliers that emerged from those meetings. So. Yes?
I have a question about the vision statement. It talks a lot about sustainability and environment, but I can just echo the, something about honoring community diversity or something in your vision statement. I thought maybe that was something we talked about. I don't know if it's drawn up.
So here is the, it didn't drop off that I can recall from other versions, but this is the iteration that came following our time together and working with the, pardon me, the staff team, and this is the version that we brought to the community meetings.
So you received feedback that maybe the vision and priorities could include something else?
So we shared the vision and we shared the strategic priorities, just to make sure that they were not a misalignment, and there was a feeling that they did reflect what's most important. The comment around the diversity of the community and equity was, I think, more along the lines of it touches everything. And so they felt that it was, it found its way through, it wove its way through everything. I don't want to say it's found its way, it wove its way through everything.
And I will say, under the Strengthen Housing and Community Services, there is an objective specifically to that that talks about strengthening services to support diverse populations and the complexity of needs. So there is a specific objective.
I think that's why I see it throughout everything, so it seems like it might tie it together nicely to have it in the vision as well. Yeah. Just a thought.
Reactions or thoughts on that?
I have a.
Yes.
Just very briefly, just wanted to say I would support that as well. I do remember us going through and sort of together crafting this vision, and after a lot of discussion, this is what we arrived at. So I do want to honor the previous work that was done, right? And if it's not something we can go back to and add, understandably so, but I think that even if it's not on there, making sure that that priority doesn't slip through the cracks, maybe it's just something for us to keep in mind.
Yeah, I mean, this is your time. If you want any tweaks and modifications, then by all means. At the end of this, we want to make sure that the vision is something that reflects the things that are most important. Yeah, Megan?
Yeah, I'll, I guess, second that. It's far more important to me that our commitment to diversity is reflected in our objectives and the work plan that we put forward than it's in the actual words, but if, I'm a wordsmith, I don't care. I mean, I care about the actions, so if that is a priority for folks, fine to put it in those three sentences.
Okay. Other thoughts about modifying the vision or bringing that idea? Because we can always go through the content and come back to it as well if we want to take fresh eyes. If we want to take fresh eyes after we've gone through the objectives and the strategic priorities. Any other thoughts or comments on the engagement activities in particular?
How were the folks who participated in the focus groups invited to participate? How were the 50 selected? It sounds amazing, by the way. I'm really grateful that it was done.
Well, I'm going to look to Barbara, who we have, we chose a lot of folks who are already involved in other ways within the city context. So, but do you want to speak a little bit more to?
Yeah, it was all of our most engaged and active community leaders across each of those sectors, as well as a few folks who are due emerging voices that I know have been engaged with all of you about really innovative approaches. So it was a really nice mix of longstanding community advocates, as well as new folks that are recently engaged. So happy to share those lists with you. They were retention only, but definitely curated from a very, very active list.
Happy to share who participated.
Yeah. And part of the objective was also to make sure that people came into the room that had different lenses, that represented broader groups, right? So, but they were, I mean, they were, without exception, very engaged. And yeah, it was, it was a good day. It was really, or a couple of days. I don't remember how long we went through before. Okay, well, so what I'd like to do first off is start with the zoom out. And I know there's going to, we're going to get to the detail because we want to make sure that they're, that it reflects the things that you would hope to see there, right? And if there are questions or refinements, this is our time to touch those things. But here is the broad framework, right? So we have the vision, which we just mentioned. And then we have the four strategic priorities. And so we can walk through these maybe and then come back and ask the question, you know, does it still resonate? Does anything need to change? But I wanted to make sure we land that first and kind of get that in the room in terms of the big scaffolding, right? This is the scaffolding of your plan. So again, those four strategic priorities. So as we walk through each of these, we're going to go a little old school because we all have the handouts. And if we try to put all that detail into slides, people would be cross-eyed and saying my name in vain, which we don't want to have happen. So what I'm going to suggest is we'll go through each of the four areas in terms of process, review the objectives. But then you make some time and space for questions. Is there anything missing? Are there things that are unclear related to the year one activities in particular? There's a lot of content. You can see that staff has spent time looking at what that will look like over the next few years. But year one is really the critical path. And so we want to make sure that the things that you would hope would be in the year one plan have found their way there. So starting off with stimulate economic and community vitality. So for the benefit of people that might be listening in, the statement is Santa Barbara supports a dynamic economy fueled by a thriving downtown and economic corridors, a diverse mix of industries and systems that support local businesses. Through innovative partnerships, clear planning, and strategic investment, the city fosters long-term economic success that is reflective of community needs. So just for the benefit of whoever might be listening in. So we have within this then four key objectives that have been identified. And they reflect a lot of the things that have already been initiated. The first one, which has been a very hot topic and came through, I think, at the beginning of each of our conversations, was regarding the State Street master plan and implementing downtown improvements. And so adopting the plan and then implementing those improvements. Again, we'll get into the detail that finds its way on the work plan. The next one, support a thriving local economy. That becomes defined, again, when you start to look at the initiatives. Increase neighborhood vitality and placemaking. This was an acknowledgement that while downtown is very important and is getting a lot of attention necessarily, there are a lot of other areas within the city that also require focus. And there are major projects and efforts underway that you don't want to lose momentum on. And the last one is to simplify the permitting process and support the customer experience. And this really speaks to, this is where we started to hear from participants that a lot of these things touch each other, right? But this is really intentional work that can help to put fresh eyes into your development review process, to help to encourage moving things forward at a quicker clip. So those are the four objectives. A mix of the broader and the more specific related to streamlining the permitting process. But I want to open it up for questions, comments. And then we want to look at the specifics in year one of your work plan document there. Looks like Kristen's ready to go.
It's really nice to see reflected back to us what we also put out there. So it's nice to see it in this format.
Good, good. Sometimes it's really helpful to have the visual, right? To be like, okay, it's not just words. Now it looks like a work plan? Because it's a work plan. Okay. So within this strategic priority area, are there things that? Well, I'm going to ask this first of all. What most excites you about what's in this particular strategic priority area? And then let's talk about those things that you have questions about, need some clarification, or might be missing, if they are. Wow, this is, you guys are a lively group this afternoon. There's like M&amp;M's over here, you guys? There's cookies, a little sugar boost?
I have a clarifying question.
Perfect, Wendy, you go first.
When, when, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly. Are you asking what excites us the most from the year one initiatives? Or from just these four objectives? Or what is it that you're asking?
It can be the detail there, or it might just be, I really want to make progress on said objective. And so it could be.
Oh, from these four? Or?
Looking at, there's four objectives within strengthen economic.
Okay, okay, we're only looking at.
We're looking at just this area right now.
Okay.
But if you do have comments on any of the initiatives, you can also make comments.
Okay.
That's right. Yeah, it's a twofer, for sure.
Perfect. Give me one second. Let me finish looking at this and then I will have comments.
Yeah.
Well, I'll comment on the spreadsheet and the specificity. There's so much there, things that, I love that when I see things that I hadn't thought of or heard about. And to see things that I know are already happening, but then to see it here. And again, it's really nice to see things reflected back that we've talked about, like onboard a new ombudsperson responsible for assisting downtown commercial projects. I mean, you could look at any one of these and see like, that's something we've talked about for a long time. And it's actually really nice to see, see the specifics listed out here.
It's in ink.
It's in ink, yes. And public.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, and keep in mind, just a reminder, you know, these were developed through staff, right? Recognizing what we have heard as important, you know, as links back to the priorities, but also those things that, you know, are, there's action behind them, or there's work that is either planned or anticipated. And so this is not just, and Kelly, if you want to elaborate at all, I don't want to speak on, out of turn, but it's an important part. Go ahead, Mike.
I'll echo, no, the list is really good. So, and I'm not going to say nothing like one of your participants in your community groups, right? What do you like best? Nothing.
Oh, that was, that was the very first, yeah. We can tell stories if you want. That was funny.
I got the story. But I think the list is comprehensive. There's a whole bunch of stuff on there I like, very little that I would quibble with. So I'll get into the first column then.
Yeah, please.
Speaking for myself, I don't think anybody, in my mind, would have believed where we are still with State Street. And year one, calling it year one still, we're like on year forever. So for, you know. For everybody, I think there's. Yeah. But for everybody, I think there's probably different focus areas of impatience and just it's gone on too long or something hasn't happened, or an accomplishment hasn't been pinned down. There's been no win. And all it is is lose, 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 lose while we, while we wait for year one initiatives to kick in. So in that regard, just that whole box on State Street, I think, again, speaking for me, needs to be split up into, even within the context of a master plan, needs to be split up into small bites and bigger bites. And the small bites need to be chased immediately just to, just to see some forward movement and success stories. That's my big box. And then just, because I'm weird, on the third page, you have implement key corridor plans. But then you use IE, Milpus master plan, which is, that's an example. That's not, I'm sorry, that's, that, not an example of, like an EG, which would be San Andreas, Sepulveda, La Vina, Milpus, Mesa, that type of thing. There's probably half a dozen key corridors in the city that should be part, either get rid of picking on Milpus, or they should all be listed out as to what we're talking about, looking towards key corridor plans. And that's it.
Do you want an including, not an example?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I think EG would be example, and IE just limits it to one, I think. I don't know. I wasn't in English, Wendy.
You get the point. We got you. Yeah. All right, thank you. That's, that's super helpful. I think, while other people are thinking and wanting to jump in, you know, part of the successful implementation, obviously, this is, this has a lot more detail. Obviously, there's still detail at the staff level that stems from here. But what I'm hearing and completely agree with is how milestones are recognized and celebrated, right? You don't have to wait till the whole objective is complete. But that there are opportunities to provide, you know, to provide updates, but also to celebrate progress. And it sounds like that's been a missing ingredient. So maybe there's some opportunity for thinking through the methods of bringing council up to speed on progress, but also the community.
I don't know. I just, I wasn't in the room, obviously. But I would bet that, you know, these boxes aren't relative to what people actually tried to drag you into talking about for a longer period of time than some of the others. That probably you could have talked about State Street for a whole meeting instead of all these other things. And those are just people in the community. And we're kind of the same people in the community too. So, you know, those, those people might gravitate to that item artificially quicker than us because we're looking at other things. But eventually, we see the same thing, that the burden, the burden is on that particular box to make some quick, I think, quick, small bite improvements.
Because people are looking.
And success stories to just move that, move that needle forward.
Eric?
I have a question. What is the City Hall rain garden? I've never heard it referred to.
Aleah, would you like to? We have, there's a free microphone here. If you want a staff one, come respond.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Friedman. It's actually a, though it seems like a small project, it's taking out part of the De La Gara Plaza. It was a planned improvement as part of the De La Gara Plaza to do a rain garden as part of a response to a state law that will not allow us to water artificial, or sorry, non-functional turf grass. So we're starting to take bites of the apple, with City Hall being the first one, doing a demonstration rain garden in partnership with the Botanic Garden to really celebrate our downtown landscape.
An example of the little nuggets that are tucked in here. Okay, Kristen and then Mayor.
Just another small comment that, you mentioned how things touch on each other. And I think it's really nice to see this ensuring fire protection services to reinforce community safety. And then also recognizing strong partnership with police department and businesses and residents. And that's something we've been hearing from the business communities a lot, is how important that connection is. So it's, it's really nice to see it there under supporting thriving economy. So that's, that's nice. I just want to make sure here, under adopt the State Street master plan and implement downtown improvements. Paseo Nuevo is under there. We're not considering that part of the master plan. That's part of the.
No, the implement downtown improvements, yeah.
Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Same with De La Gara Plaza. Not part of the master plan per se, but also part of downtown improvements.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, no, I realize this falls under stimulate economic and community vitality, but it is, it is all about the economy, I think. And the council approached that last week on the adaptive reuse plan, where we said, let's, let's, let's let the, let's let the market and the economy work and do what it's supposed to do. So, and I see, I see a lot of that, maybe in almost too much granularity, because the economy makes, is the only thing that really makes everything else happen for us. Like even talking about an RFP for an economic development plan, I think the economic development plan really is figuring out ways to facilitate the private sector to produce the kind of revenues we're going to need to go forward where the rest of everything is on the sheet here. So it's a little self-evident for me. There are other things that are talked about, other kind of revenue sources. And we developed two revenue sources in the last seven years. So I'm a little reticent to go out and say, let's go, let's go hit these guys up again. So I think we need to look into ourselves, our processes, and what it takes for us to make the private sector successful. Because after all, that's the money we use to do all of this. So that's, I think it's a little simpler than a lot of these things.
Okay. Megan?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I think I will second Councilmember Jordan's comments about the short-term State Street-specific wins and longer term. I just couldn't have said it better. So fully support that. I also agree, it's really fantastic to see it all written down in this way. And it's just extremely helpful, generally speaking, to have this. We should just like, this plastered to our desks at the dais, I feel like.
Not a bad idea.
Because I might try to do something, just hold this.
Yeah, you need an image as a symbol.
Yeah. Couple of sort of broad points. And I think this has been alluded to. It's easy to forget how many different areas of city work feed into this. I mean, I don't know that, truthfully, my mind was not going to the airport when we were talking about this. But there's so many important airport pieces on here. And so I just, I'm really, that's very helpful for me. Similar to the mayor, but definitely, I think, coming from a different perspective. I am too. I too highlighted this RFP for economic development plan and then the RFP for retail strategy and vibrancy study. And to the extent we're giving feedback, I would just say, I'm, I'm personally soured on studies. I just don't, I, I have, over the last seven years, seen so many come through. And I just feel quite frustrated by how long they take, how, the result that we get. And I kind of feel like any economic development plan study is going to give us something like we already have laid out here. And so maybe it's just food for thought. I don't know that I'm asking for it to be deprioritized or anything. I just would really, before we go forward or prioritize those items, I would like to understand exactly what it is we're looking to get out of them and how those results would be reflected back into these year one, two, and three initiatives. And just sort of the interplay between those two is confusing.
I can talk a little bit to that. And I think you've seen, I like actionable items versus just studies that sit on a shelf. So for me, economic development plans really would focus on sort of like, what are the types of businesses we should be attracting to our different business corridors? What is the market sort of looking like in those corridors? What are the things that we should be doing to support business attraction and retention in those corridors? And like very specific strategies around those. Similarly, looking at the airport, like what, what are the opportunities? And so it's really focused on what is the, what, Allah, the mayor's comment, what is the market sort of saying is the opportunities in these different business districts that we have? And how do we sort of target those different business sectors we have, and how do we sort of target those different business sectors in very specific ways, which is something the city has never done before? And so I think, you know, I've seen it, and I know what it looks like from other cities, I think here it would obviously be a little more unique, but I think it could be a very powerful tool to really direct our outreach efforts as we're reaching out to, you know, commercial realtors, different business types, and sort of how we're marketing the city.
Wendy?
There's one point I wanted to echo from, can you hear me okay? I feel like the mic is, okay, there we go. Similar to what Councilmember Harmon was mentioning about, you know, the fact that we have all of these studies, and a lot of times, we've seen them either go nowhere, or the study comes back and the data was flawed, or whatever it is, I really do think, I mean, the answers really are in the community, and as I'm sure you've seen from all of that feedback that you've gotten, but, you know, for example, you know, implementing key corridor plans, I was very excited to see Milpus Master Plan in here, because, you know, these corridors, even the Haley Corridor, Milpus, you know, over on the Mesa, Dela Vina, et cetera, all of these are, you know, the feedback I often get from the community is that all of these are forgotten for the sake of State Street, and I think we can walk and, what's the word?
Walk a true gum.
Walk a true gum, yeah, thank you. And so, you know, I do think that because we are also facing such a tight budget, and we don't necessarily have the money to be going off and getting a bunch of other consultants make, you know, conducting all these studies, is really, when we focus on the economic vitality, is yes, how do we attract more businesses, but also, what do we do with the current businesses that are there? How do we make it easier for them to stay there? Because for a lot of them, it's just very unstable. Sometimes they're able to make it in and get a storefront on Milpus or State Street, but staying there in the long term has often been one of those key things that the businesses often struggle with. And so, not only in bringing that vitality, but making sure that we can retain it, and I really feel like a lot of the community groups, the businesses themselves, not just the folks that own the buildings, but the actual people who are providing those goods and services, what can the city do to streamline their ability to stay? I was also really encouraged to see the adopt a property maintenance ordinance, I think that's really encouraging, to make sure that our, you know, our buildings are up to code, and, you know, really seeing a lot of the, lot of partnerships, and seeing that we are willing to engage, continue to engage the community in making sure that, you know, all these things move forward, but I really think that we need to strike a balance between how can we help the market make profit, yes, but also, how do we make sure we balance that and make sure that it's sustainable for the community that's already here?
Good. Eric?
All right, a lot of good comments. So first, on State Street, I think we need to back up first.
Yep.
Before we even start trying to prioritize this, that, and whatever. The council needs to make a decision on what we want to do, even if it's as, that's what paralyzing. And even if it's a five-minute item that we say we already voted on what we want to do two years ago, and leave it like it is through, Mary's going to like this, 2026, which is what we said we were going to do two years ago, and then we can move forward. Or if we want to make changes, that's what we need to do, because you cannot make an interim plan if half the people are telling us open it and half are closing, and the council's like, I don't know what I want to do. So for me, that should be like a sub-year-one priority, I think.
It launches, it launches this one.
Until we decide what we're going to do through the end of 26, it makes it difficult to get everyone to buy in to a vision. And I find what we're, I think we're all at that point, and I find whatever it goes, we tried two years ago because we hadn't voted on it, and we voted at the time, but it seems like there's a change, so that would be a priority, is just on the record, yea or nay, at a public meeting, what do you want to do through 2026, I think. That needs to be priority one, and then all these other ideas will naturally flow from that, because in the community, we know the certainty, and that gets the master plan, it gets us to adoption of the master plan, and you can coordinate whatever that is with where the master plan is going. Supporting the thriving local economy.
Councilmember Friedman, can you turn your mic on?
Oh, sorry, I thought I didn't. And so, for the other part, supporting local economy, the RF, development issue on RFP, question on that, did we already give input on that, or do we have input on that from the council on what we want to see in there? I know that came to us through the budget process, but what is that?
Yeah, we have a draft that has been ready to go, it's just hasn't, it's been lagging due to other priorities, and so the council gave us some feedback on it. We're happy to, I think, bring the proposals back to council once we have them, but at this point, I think it's sending out the RFP, and then we bring it back to council for discussion.
Perfect, because I didn't want to have another plan to have a plan, I wanted to get it out, so.
You're talking about the economic development?
Yeah, the economic development plan. I think that's a key, because that is getting our economic constituents, like the chamber, put something out there, and there's others out there, to get them involved and get their creativity, and then get them running, because we need to really look at diversifying our economy, so it's not just tourism and government and other things. And then, just a couple more comments. I'd also like to get more information on the enhanced urban infrastructure financing district. That is a newer concept. I'm learning about it coming up to speed, but I have a, I'll admit it, I don't know much about that right now, and I think the council as a whole should be really interested in that, and I've talked with Ms. McAdoo about it. The possibility is, it's not just for economics, but it also would be a potential tool for housing development, affordable housing development, I should say.
You said the EIFD?
EIFD.
Yeah, under the increased neighborhood vitality, yeah. So that would be a priority for me, to understand that, because that could be similar to the old RDAs. It's similar, but different as I understand it, but there are tools.
Yeah, so it's only the city's property tax, and not all of the taxing entity's property tax, so an RDA, you would basically get, the city, the city's RDA would get to collect the increment of school district, county, all the taxing entity's property tax, and then invest that. This is a new tool that only gets to leverage the increment of the city's property tax, so it gets set at a base, and then there's, the increased value of the property tax can be reinvested. I'll just say, we have, we have had a consultant on board evaluating this, and we should be coming back to finance committee probably in the next couple months with the initial findings. We've mostly been focused on it for affordable housing, I think when we did our initial analysis, there just isn't enough increment for State Street and the infrastructure things that we've been talking about, but it could be an interesting potential for affordable housing.
Perfect. That's good news, because that's a key one, and that allows us to get funding that we might not other, we could borrow against future funding, so we might be able to get some much-needed cash infusion into housing, which I'm sure we'll talk about later. And then the last couple, this one, I like, I recommend it gets elevated in terms of the priorities, and that's the, initiate the public arts plan, for a couple of reasons. We're doing the parks master plan right now, and that would be a good opportunity to have those going concurrently, because the parks are the perfect place to have public art, and State Street Master Plan is going, and if we had an arts plan that incorporates both of those, all on the same track, you're going to get more economies of scale, but you're not just making the arts secondary, because the arts is what brings people to the placemaking, and to have that plan, which we don't have right now, would be key. And then with the addition of the film festival on State Street, you're also having Music Academy on State Street, there's going to be new opportunities, and the new library plaza, there's going to be new opportunities for the arts, especially in the downtown, that we can incorporate into that. And then the last two are part of the same one, arguably, I think, the most important, is to simplify the permitting process, launch the stormwater mass, stormwater maintenance program reforms, but the first bullet under that, coordinating with external stakeholders, we can, but we've been coordinating with them for decades, so we know where the pinch points are, and that is the key, because new businesses want to invest, but there's still a stigma, even though we've made a lot of progress, that the Long Beach Development Team, so with how we can improve our internal processes, which would be more ministerial, it doesn't even need to come to council, is always a plus, but then how do we get that information out to the public that we've made these changes? That's the second part, that would help us tell the story, so it's what we're actually doing, and then how we're communicating that first bullet under there would be important.
So continuing to, using that, illustrating that as an example, what I'm hearing in a couple of different comments is, let's not go backwards to go forwards, right? So continue to move forward and take advantage of what we know and where we know it, whether it's community input, or pain points, or whatever it might be, just to make sure that you're not retreading, overly retreading on some areas that have been done in the past with planning and others, that was, kind of jumped out to me.
Can I add one more?
Of course.
Okay. I just thought about it after I read through the whole thing, but, so, a problem I think we all have is we just forget about stuff that's already right in front of us. So, you know, from, I don't know, September or October through April, we have a built infrastructure of hotel rooms that are, that drastically grow in their vacancy rate compared to the other months of the year, and I don't really see anything on there to talk about playing a role in driving, particularly like a month like right now, right? Like, who wouldn't come to Santa Barbara right now? But in helping drive, yeah, exactly, but in, but in helping drive.
Just here to help.
Drive the use of infrastructure that we already have set up, whether that's placemaking, whether that's events and festivals, whether it's things in restaurants, I don't know, more weddings, I don't know, whatever it may be. But the plus, the double pluses there are, the rooms already exist, and there's, you could certainly find out what that number was and when they are, and you could also get data on what the reduction is on our local employee base too, that happens in the off-season too, that wouldn't necessarily happen if we had a longer, higher season, or a true shoulder season on each side of our high season. And then, most of these were like a partner in crime, because we get a percentage via TOT tax, so, you know, every dollar, we get 12 cents on, so, yeah. So just seems to me that should be a little box in there, probably under local economy at the bottom of the first page, maybe.
Great, perfect. Okay. Other comments in this area? Reflections? I mean, no surprise, I mean, I think a lot of you start with, like, we need action on State Street, I mean, from the very first conversations we had, was like, we need to make a decision and we need to do something. That has been a thread that I have, you know, followed all the way through, and I'm hearing echoes of that again today, so, that's a consistent theme. So other, other some refinements, no major gaps, aside from maybe, you know, zeroing in a little bit more on some opportunity relative to local business, you know, the hotel usage and such. Okay. Any other reflections on this area? Keep in mind that we're going to go through all of these, and then I'm going to ask you to identify, just for Kelly's edification today, you know, the, at the objective level, those things that you think have the greatest urgency behind them, recognizing this is a plan that has been developed about where you really want to see action and be able to bring it back to the community in the near term, so I want you to just keep that in the back of your head as we're walking our way through these other ones. Okay. So, the next area, enhance community resiliency and safety, again, for the benefit of those who might be listening in, Santa Barbara is a resilient and prepared community, the city leverages resources and partnerships to respond to increasing risks while investing in infrastructure that reflects a commitment to climate adaptation, sustainability, and safety for all community members. So that was the success statement that came out through the iterations of our process. So we have, for this one, also four objectives, again, at the broad level, the first one, increase community emergency preparedness, second, invest in infrastructure improvements that support climate adaptation and protect community assets, third, strengthen public safety services, and fourth, advance clean air, clean water, and clean spaces initiatives in support of public health. So different, different dimensions of resiliency are reflected in this particular strategic priority, so it covers a range of options. All right, so let's take a look. Let's see, beginning, well, beginning on page, there's no page numbers. But it starts across the top, and so there's a green, page five, enhance community resiliency and safety. So same questions, what are the things that jump out to you as, you know, particularly, you know, important, but also, you know, diving in on clarifying questions, things that might be missing. Kristin?
Great, so, very excited about seeing the, establishing the East Side Library as a community resilience hub, and then I see that that stays, sort of like, developing that further through year two and three, but I think it would be great to have ways to develop other resilience hubs as well, locally in neighborhoods, or in other areas, because I just believe in them so strongly, and it's really exciting to see this one, but how could we be supporting, you know, neighborhoods that want to do this, or schools that want to do this? What could we do?
So that might, would that be an example of something maybe that follows an out year after?
Yes, yeah, I think really having this be proof of concept, and then seeing how we could expand that out, or support other entities who are really wanting to do this. You know, I don't know what kind of incentives for having a microgrid, or these types of things. And then, really happy to see the daylighting, the standards of coverage study, been sort of waiting for that one and excited. I had a question about, develop a countywide erosion and flooding monitoring program? Would we be developing that, or contributing to the counties, or, yeah?
Thank you, Councilmember Sneddon. We would be working regionally with our partners, but technically, no one has done that to date, and that data does not exist in a centralized place, so we would sort of be leveraging our Adaptation and Resilience Group to accelerate the development of that.
Wow, okay. That sounds big, that sounds very big, and I think maybe we could lean on our, on our county counterparts to be kind of working on that also. I really like to see under here again, in those like, those crossover touchpoints, the assessing PD and FD staffing needs for new enforcement education initiatives, the e-bike street vendors, oh, that's not the crossover one, it's that next one, local response capacity by supporting employees' ability to live in the community, such a small little box there, but that would be huge if that was something that we really could have happen, and I'm seeing that's an ongoing, year one, year two, year three, so I support that, that being an ongoing effort in that too. And actually, I just, I love every initiative in here, and I really like that you are tying together the housing and housing of public safety in this as well.
All right. Mayor?
Yeah, as we look at things about community preparedness, and for, looking at some of the things that have to do with what Ms. Sneddon was bringing up as well, we started a list of protocols with both the public safety chiefs, city administrator, and sustainability about the lower Laguna District, which tends to flood, which may be being kicked into progress any time now, so I know that Ms. McAdoo, we talked about publishing a protocol for that, which I guess is still in the works, is that correct?
Correct, but we can capture that somewhere on here, in terms of, yeah.
And in addition to that, there are the FEMA funds that we did get that partially helped the Laguna Weir Gate project, mostly with doing a new pipe way up in the lower Gutierrez area, Palm and Rose Avenue and whatnot, but getting to completion on those, continuing to work with Congressman Carbohall.
Yeah, and I would, we could maybe have a sub-bullet, I'm just looking down under the invest in infrastructure improvements objective, there's mitigate threats resulting from sea level rise and major storms, so maybe have a sub-bullet on there that says, you know, publishize response protocols in the Laguna District to be followed by others, so we can, we can look at that.
I know, the Director Demore's here too, we talked about the pumps and the things that are on order and trying to complete, and like I said, the Laguna Weir Gates or something, they've been out of repair for quite a while now. And then the other thing was, public safety services and code enforcement, which I'd like to specifically highlight, because, and I know that's going to be a budget item, but our code enforcement teams, or what we've got right now is one, and it's really stressed because we have to send people out at night to do the code enforcement on, you know, the food vendors and whatnot, but we have other code things that are coming up that are under enforced, a lot of it is putting the genie back in the bottle post-COVID, you know, things like sign ordinances and little things like that, to be consistently enforced throughout the city. So we're going to need to have something in that area that helps out, because those are not, you know, uniform police priorities, they're things that we have to do with code. And I think public safety and public health are dependent on us being able to do that and enforce those things, so I'd like to see those.
So adding that as a, as an item to highlight on the work plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric?
I agree with my colleagues, a lot of great work on disaster preparedness and safety, and it is the most important, because we, as we all know, we're prone to natural disasters, so the more we can do upfront, not just through the city, but through the public themselves, pays dividends down the line. Just a couple of items under the first objectives, the increased community engagement and preparedness. I met with former Councilmember Bendy Wyatt and representatives of the Fire Safe Council, and I believe you have as well, Councilmember Sneddon, and they were asking, and I should have brought this up earlier, but I thought this was a good time, they've asked if we would consider having a council liaison to their meetings, similar to what we do with a lot of the other community groups, we do with the arts, we do with all these groups, so it would be another community group liaison that, as part of our appointments that we make for community groups, so we could have one or two council members appointed when we do our assignments to community groups, and have those, maybe two or one and an alternate, whatever it is, appointed, and they're open to us having, going to their meetings, and meetings, and I think it would go a long ways towards helping that.
I can go.
Yeah, and just make it official, yeah, so. And then, the year one priority was, and there is implement the expanded wildland assessment district, I know that's underway, but that will be a great opportunity, and I think in the year two and three, hopefully, a year from now, or a little over a year from now, the vote will be positive that it'll pass, and then year two and three, they're blank right now, but those could get filled in on how we're going, what the work plan is going to be, assuming that the, I know you can't do it now, because it hasn't passed, but just be prepared that it, be prepared that it will, and then what is the work plan going forward in that, so we can hit the ground running, rather than trying to have to figure it out afterwards. And then, invest in infrastructure, the mayor mentioned it, the Laguna tide gates and all the infrastruc, and all the tide gates and the pumps, and then just maintaining the, the vegetation in the creek, and I know he and I have been talking, a couple constituents, Ms. McAdoo, there's a lot going on there, but to the extent that we can prioritize that over the next year, it would go a long ways towards addressing some of the flooding, not all, but some of the flooding issues that take place.
Does that relate to the protocols? Is that the, okay.
And, and the infrastructure itself, because it is outdated, so, and there's some concerns with if you lift the gates, you can't get them down, those pumps and everything, so, just that we have modern infrastructure and a plan in place to, to fund it.
Alalia would like to add some additional thoughts.
I did want to add that we have a catch-all item called the Drainage Master Plan, that would be a citywide, starting with Laguna watershed, looking at all of our pain points with public works, and identifying where we need enhanced or modern infrastructure, or where there's some nature-based solutions we can implement, so that's all kind of captured in that.
Okay, perfect. And to the extent during that plan, if we could get a little, just some attention to this one in particular, which is right there, because I know that there's constituents who are engaged, and even though it's down here, it impacts the flooding over on the other side of the freeway in the, in the East Side, so I don't want it to get caught up in a, in like a whole process, and then that takes a year, and then, then we're coming back to it if.
Absolutely. We have grant funding currently to start there.
Perfect, thanks. And then, just a couple, complete the waterfront wastewater system adaptation plans, that's part of the sea level rise plans, but those are extremely important to move forward. As sea level rise and that changes, we want to make sure that we're looking at the proper metrics of where sea level rise is, because those in particular, in particular wastewater, but all of it, are important, because those are going to be massive projects, you know, 10, 20, 30 years from now, that we're going to have to deal with, and we're going to plan now. And then, and then the, the creek buffer ordinance, there's a part of me that just says, like, let's just take it off, let's just take it off, and let the 2027 council deal with it.
I, I will just also highlight that this is actually a housing element required, because we need objective standards when it comes to creek buffers and housing development, so, we, we need to be making progress on it. So, we, I think we have, but I, I think we have come up with a really great community outreach plan, and I think have kind of rethought that ordinance. I've met with a number of community members, Alalia, and I have discussed pretty significantly in that process, and so, I hope that this sort of next round that we go through, we have a consultant on board who's helping us identify more clearly, like, threat levels in the different creek areas, really sort of refining the boundaries a little bit, so, I'm hopeful that it will not be as controversial the next time it comes back.
Where, where is that, where is that one?
It is under, it's the bottom of invest in infrastructure improvements, this is, adopt creek, third one up from the bottom.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I was hoping you'd say, so.
Oh, there it is.
Is we're, we're relooking at it, but it, it is a priority in a way, just because the community was so engaged, and there's already kind of a pushback, but to kind of, if we could get that one done in a new way, like you just said, it'll go a long ways, and that's one I think we can get checked off, and move on, so it's not one of those ones, year after year after year, we could, we could deal with that one, so, that's what I got.
Go ahead, Megan. Oh, sorry. You guys can arm wrestle.
I have to go first, so I can nominate Megan to take care of the creek buffer. She has the most creek district buffer area, I think it's only fair. To that point, though, you know, somebody will say, oh, you're on this again, but on all of these pages, I think, it should be recognized, we could communicate way better than we do now with people, and our problem is, we have just different ways to do it, we have some departments doing their own, that doesn't get to anybody in City Hall while they're doing it, unless they happen to read something on a social post, or see an email eventually, in the midst of their thousand emails on some social topic, but we need to, we need to do a better, a better job also at meeting people where they are, and not meeting them in ways that are comfortable to us. So, I am amazed on the mesa, how many old people don't read their emails, okay? And, so, I just, this, they're all mature people. Well, how many people don't look at, they don't look at next door? You know anybody like that?
I, I will, I will highlight, under.
It's, it's here somewhere.
It's under increased neighborhood vitality and placemaking, there is one that says, explore increased opportunities for public outreach for city-led projects and events.
And it's in the next section, where references, I think, SB Connect, it calls it something else, Connect, and I realize that, but all of those things are marginally what we do already, and just a little enhancement on them, and I think, something else I wrote on another page is, I think we have to do a better job at doing things we've never done before. I mean, that should be our number one thing, to me. So, communication, I talk about this all the time, I'm just really annoyed with the 2,000 different ways we communicate separately to community people. And then, missing in that first section also, Mr. Mayor, this will, because you and I are, you talk about this all the time, is an effort on our part to increase neighborhood groups, however you define neighborhoods. Those people that you can get into neighborhood groups, and maybe they're not like the six different ones that are in town right now, that are bigger, maybe they're even smaller, you get a better communication option to them automatically, and say for like creek buffers, you help bring those people along in the process much earlier than the strangers out there, who are going to launch about the loss of their backyard, and didn't hear anything about the, the first year of planning. So, I, I really think, you know, at a district level, that, that paying attention to developing and nurturing active and good working neighborhood groups is really key to a healthy district, which then, if you get more than that, you get more healthy districts, and pretty soon you have a healthy town, right? Isn't that the way it works? So, so, I'd love to see that added to the list.
And I will also point out, and we're going to get there, too, on the, in the last of the strategic priorities around the organization, there's an objective to increase public trust and community engagement, and so, it illustrates there is a lot of crossover among these things.
You could actually, in my perfect world, next time you put those up, you could put, between every one of them, put an arrow going each direction back and forth to the silos, right? Because they all, they all affect each other.
Yeah, well, and how we present the final strategic plan, actually, I mean, there are some ideas there, too, so, yeah, connected for sure. Megan?
Accepted. Yeah, a lot of really, I think I agree with all the comments that have been made thus far, and I think I'm always reminded when we look at, or when we talk about, rather, community resiliency and public safety-related issues, how fundamental I see our role in ensuring community safety is, and, and obviously, safety has lots of different ways that it can be interpreted, but like here, we're talking fundamentally, like, your person is safe, this is what we're talking about, and I, I struggle to say that I would want us to push to get the creek buffer ordinance done over updating our emergency operations plan, like, emergency operations plan, so I guess where I struggle in even giving feedback, is I would love to know, like, baseline, what are those things that are truly about, like, rubber meets the road, there is an emergency, and we are either not prepared, or not as prepared as we should be? Those are the things that I think, just for me personally, must be prioritized. Understanding, you know, safety comes into play into all four of these, but like, you know, I, I just personally find it really hard to say that I would support anything over upgrading our EOC. You know, I mean, like, that seems so fundamental, it's almost like it shouldn't even be on this list in some ways, because that, that so needs to be done, like, that is a threshold thing for me.
Threshold, but also important to have it on the list, because if you don't have it, then, right, things get buried, and you lose sight, this keeps it in view.
So, and, and I also will say, like, there may be, upgrade our EOC, it's perfectly fine, but it could be better, and I just don't know, I mean, I don't know exactly where we are with some of these things, so I say, maybe just give the blanket comment that for me personally, where I would love to really prioritize, is for us to think through that lens, like, are we covering all of our bases in the event of an emergency truly? Are we truly ready? And then, once we say, okay, we're, we're confident, we have all of these foundational, like, stage one pieces done, maybe then, some of this other stuff can come into play, but I just see, like, on here, some things that seem to me, I mean, just so, so foundational and fundamental, that like, nothing else should happen until we have an emergency operations plan that's like truly reflective of our current existence, so that, I think it's amazing, though, and all of it needs to be done, including, you know, the Laguna tide gates, I mean, I, yes, and, you know, there's lots of money, knock on wood, from the Coastal Conservancy, like, things are, and, and that can come into play, how we sort of put these pieces together, but just prioritizing the basics, for me, when it comes to literal public safety, is very important.
Well, and, you know, being able to reflect and capture the, the critical foundational elements, but being able to then name them, and identify what you've been able to do, right? And so, you know, part of this is putting it into the context of a broader plan, so that you can make those steps forward, and not lose sight of the other elements that have to happen, but it gives you a framework to prioritize within. And so, also, I think one of the values of thinking about the framework at the objective level is, you know, sometimes there are needs to be flexible within things, there may be a higher need, you know, one element of something, and so, understanding, you know, within these objectives, what rises to the highest level, doesn't mean you don't make any progress on anything else, but it says, this is where we want to be making, celebrating our greatest success, right? So, okay, yeah.
Follow-up question, so, I have a couple of follow-up questions, so, sea level rise is.
It's a problem.
Indeed, and it's sort of like, how are we even ever going to manage it? So, where in this plan is it, in the individual?
So, a couple of spots, so mostly in the invest in infrastructure improvements, the first one is the complete waterfront, water wastewater system adaptation plan, so that is a sea level, and you'll actually see the first version of that as council in December.
Great.
And then, the other, you'll see a little bit down, is mitigate threats resulting from sea level rise and major storms, so I think those are the two key ones there.
So, it's spread out over several years, and probably will continue to be, okay?
Correct, yeah.
That's one, and then, I guess, these two are maybe recommendations, I'm not sure, but, public safety, I think it's leading that way, but needing its own Spanish outreach coordinator, trainer, community member for both fire department and police department, and really all EOC-type operations ahead of time, community building, and I think that needs to be sort of a full-time, full-on position. And then, I had a question about data-driven policing, and I guess, just a comment that, you know, the, the data's always going to drive all policing to the downtown area, and I think, just feedback I get a, a lot of times, that the more remote areas, like the entire Riviera, Ucliptis Hill, out, you know, farther out and remote areas, don't feel, you know, because there isn't as much crime as often, they, they feel that maybe there could be one officer who was sort of dedicated to kind of monitoring and, and patrolling those areas sort of regularly. It's a huge geographic area with not a lot of crime, and not a lot of density, but also things happen, and I think just having eyes on it, so I just wanted to put that, put that suggestion in there. Oh, and one more question, blue economy, I know this isn't under this, but it reminded me of sea level rise, under economic vitality, is it sort of in the ether?
What was the one I missed?
The blue economy.
Oh, oh, okay, blue, got it.
Yeah, like, I thought we had something that rested on, well, wasn't.
The sea level rise reminded me of that, so, oh, here we go.
Councilmember Sneddon, I'm, I'm realizing that a number of the waterfront items didn't end up on this version of the list. So, there, there was to kind of leverage, leverage the blue economy and a few other of those, I can get those over to you ASAP.
Well, I'll give my full support for that, thank you.
Sorry about that, we'll make sure that, yes, we had, we had to, we were trying to do version control, and, you know, sometimes it's hard, we have multiple people adding stuff to a list, so, yeah.
Definitely. That's why we're having this conversation. Yeah, also with the data-driven pieces, too, you know, part of that can be, you know, data can also be perceptions of safety, right? And so, you know, it's, it's obviously having, you know, responses and GIS tech, you know, tools are helpful, but perception also is something that is a form of data, so, yeah. All right. What other comments, questions?
I have a question.
Please.
If we don't have a lot of the waterfront items in front of us, how would that work when we are doing our prioritized, like, when we're prioritizing our items? So, for example, if we want some of those waterfront items to be a priority, could we later add them as priorities? I know we're setting those priorities today, but since we're not seeing those in front of us, I'd just like an opportunity to consider them.
No, well, keep in mind, we're prioritizing not at the, not at the initiative level, we're prioritizing at the objective level.
Got it, got it. Okay, got you, that makes my sense.
The detail in the work plan, those can be better filled out with any missing pieces.
Got it, okay.
Naming those missing pieces so that they get into the work plan is going to be important.
Okay, that's good clarification, thank you.
And, you know, when we come back with the draft plan, if we want to rethink about priorities, we can do that at that point, too, so, once we see all of you.
We call this a living, breathing document, right, Kelly? Yeah. Make it real, absolutely. All right. Anything else we have related to enhance community resiliency and safety? Okay, let's move to, do we need to take a quick break? We're, we're halfway through the, the two, we've done two, we have two more. Do you want to do a stand-up stretch real quick, or? Let's do that, let's just do a quick, do a quick 10, all right, just to make sure we don't fall asleep in the second half. So, we have two more strategic priorities that we're going to navigate our way through, so we'll have an opportunity to look at the objectives, dive into the initiatives. After we've done that, on the break, I gave you all your little collection of dots, and by the way, I will note, I, I was going to give you five, but the rows that come into things allow for six, so you're already welcome, and you have that many, so I'll be thinking about what you can do. I know those are always the choices nobody wants to make, but it's helpful to understand where there starts to become some shared energy. So, that's, that's our process for what we'll be doing the next part of our time together, so, let's take a look now at strengthen housing and community services. Again, I'll go ahead and read it, not because you guys can't read it yourself, but for the benefit of anybody who might be listening in. So, strengthen housing and community services, Santa Barbara strengthens our community by delivering supportive services that meet diverse needs and increasing housing supply, each essential for fostering well-being and stability for all, especially our most vulnerable residents. Three objectives aligned to this strategic priority, they include, number one, increase housing affordability and production, trains are coming, number two, promote housing stability, and tenant protections, protections, and number three, strength, strengthen services to support diverse populations and the complex, and the complexity of needs. So, three, three areas there. Big topic.
Was that was it?
This is the three, yes. All right, go.
Okay, first, I think streamlining permitting also maybe belongs in this category.
Because this is where we have the arrows that pass, pass through, okay?
Yes, and I just want to take this opportunity, Ms. McAdoo, this makes me want to cry, to see this actually here, and on the year one, year two, the completing the research and the draft ordinance, city-driven, and community engagement in support of comprehensive rent stabilization program, to already see it on here with plans for that detail and community engagement, and then year two, the implementation, and for so many years at these community meetings, at these priority-setting meetings, to have talked about it for so long, and to, to see it there in, in writing is, I'm very, very grateful, thank you.
I would echo the, if there's probably one thing that should be on every list, it's like.
Perimeter improvements.
Oh, no, that's not what I was going to say.
Communication, communication.
Oh, no, sorry, fix the permitting process.
Okay, okay.
Or make it better, not fix it, make it better.
Yeah.
You know, it has its roots in 100-year-old Santa Barbara, and it's struggling to get born again. born again. So, um, I go back to what I said before, two things you haven't done before. I mean, to me, it takes that. Um, just two things, other than that, but that is really, for these two pages, that is, to me, just, uh, you can want to do all these other things, but then if you open a door, but then make people get hit every step they take through the door, they're not going through the door very well. Um, two other things, um, that don't jump out at me on this, and that's still not, there's a lot of burden we place on the city, dollar-wise or process-wise. And I'd like to put another one on, and I think we just, uh, look around at space we have that's underutilized. Um, you know, pains me to see the Enterprise rental place on that corner in Chapala that built a three-quarters of a parcel of the parking lot and a little shack for a rental place, and, and it's only 10 years old, and it didn't go up at least a story and put something over it, or, but, um, I think we have a lot of surface slots, so we have to, again, do something we haven't done before, just because it's always been that way. We have to break that mold a little bit and use space, it's just a surface lot. And then same thing with the air. The air above anything is a fair game to me, to a point. But I think you have to stop saying, uh, my opinion, you have to stop saying, I'm, I'm chasing affordable housing, but I'm making the guy who builds the housing only build two stories or less. It's just not going to work, particularly in the downtown area. Um, and then the other thing, um, is a little more personal for a couple of us, uh, I think we need to expand our role when there is opportunity to have a private development do things for the public good. Um, and so, when you're able to talk a developer in a, in saying, in, in an offline conversation on adding in types of housing to their development that we want, that they're not required to do, particularly in the current state legislation allowances, that, uh, you, the city will play a role, a better role, as a city, in not getting that hijacked and messed up by private or semi-public interests. Um, I, you know, I could tell you some other time with all that, what the details were on multiple projects. I think it exists on Paseo Nuevo too. From the start, we've never been able to have a conversation with Paseo Nuevo and just start to have conversations on, well, what can we do if we were to ask what we want to do more. But, um, but it just seems like we lose opportunities where there are opportunities there that both we know about and don't know about, and, um, and, and then bemoan the fact that not more of the type of housing gets built and paid for by somebody else. And I think those opportunities exist out there. That's it.
And so, maybe suggesting adding something in to year one, under that first objective?
Streamlining permitting. I'll just make one ask too.
Yeah, but, but understanding kind of the nuance that you're suggesting within that, which is...
There's stuff in there, like leverage, the public and private funding sources, or pursue opportunities to deliver, deliver workforce housing, you know. My definition of workforce housing, it is, it isn't low or very low-income housing, it is exactly what you heard about today, it's nurses and, and, and teachers and that kind of thing. And that is totally non, in the world of subsidy, that is totally non-subsidized housing. So, somebody's got to figure out a way to bring somebody to the table that's going to have to pay for it all by being willing to offer them something else that they're not getting outside of that. You know, typically, we would do that in one-offs every five years on a development agreement. And it just, it's burdensome, nobody likes it. It's, it involves seven people with 20, 20 different opinions on what we really need, and, and really, we just...
After it's gone through all the other channels.
No, really, we need to just, we just need to somehow figure out how to structure that so that it becomes a, an avenue that is available for somebody to make, take a run at, without feeling they had to go, you know, meet with every council member, then meet with key staff, and then, you know, then get, uh, have nothing happen after putting in a, a year of work on that, because it's a new set of decision-makers or something, so.
Clarifying question then, for, for the discussion. Um, you both said streamline the process, but what I'm hearing you describe is something bigger than streamlining the process. It sounds like it's more like modernize, or re-review, or update, or something other than just...
For me, yes. I don't know, I won't speak.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking for the group. That was the question for, I'm just curious as to the temperament of, of all of you on that one. Mayor?
I was going to say the underfunds.
Okay, okay. Let's, let's stay on this topic just for a moment then. Go ahead, Megan.
Yeah, I think it's both. I think we both have to streamline the processes as they currently exist, and then understand where, like, it's a new world, and we have to be responsive to that new world by creating pathways that are reflective of the constraints and opportunities that are currently presented to us. So I think, to Mike's point, like, streamline, and I, I agree that that's so, I mean, we've been saying that for, like, I don't know, so many years. Um, but then also, yeah, like, we don't have a, a clear process around that conversation. Um, and I think there's plenty of opportunity to do it, and I think probably an interest on the private side to have everyone be happy versus hating the project that they're allowed to do, but we all still hate it, you know? I mean, so I, I, I think that that could be...
There's a two for, there's like, there's two elements here.
And I think it's, it's, you know, made trickier by the five-hearing rule that the state has now imposed. But, you know, I know, one of the things that I've, I've done in other cities is, before the project even starts going through the process, it's all, like, especially for major projects, coming to the council with sort of a preliminary work session, just to get council sort of general feedback and guidance on the project. So we'd have to look at whether that would then subject, that would be subject to the five-hearing rule, and is this just, like, sort of an exploratory conver, so I think there's some ways that we can look at that to get early council feedback.
And the developer can waive that rule.
Exactly. If they, if they want to get early feedback and...
You know, there's plenty of, I think, opportunity for us to provide carrots, to have them be willing to maybe put that stick off for a little bit. But yeah, I mean, I, that's of interest to me. I don't know, for me personally, that that takes a priority about, over some of these other things. I think it's something for us all to be thinking about, but I also feel like state law moves so, so quickly, that for us to develop, like, really hardcore processes around state law seems, I don't know, like, I, I just worry that we are, um, we're going to do all this work, and then it's going to change again. So, to me, I, I think you're right. I don't think you're wrong at all. I think there's opportunity, but I think there's greater, um, longer-term opportunity, when we're talking about process specifically, to really focus on streamlining what we have. Um, and I think those things will naturally come together.
Keep that in view, but start off here. Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, to kind of riff on that a little bit, is, is the position we created that's now vacant is the on Blizzman, which, right, deals with multifamily units and tenant improvements. And I'd like to see that, that whole service be expanded, so that we can get people into a process way ahead of time, so they can get all the, all the bumps and hurdles in the road, and give what every, everybody that has ever gone in the building department longs for a certainty. It doesn't necessarily have to be anything else but knowing what a real timeline's going to be, what the potential surprises are going to be. And if they can get all that ironed out ahead of time, before they even go into the, you know, the PRT, whatever they're doing, just the whole, the whole process of a template, due dates, everything that you're going to run into, to the extent that can be anticipated, plus the discretionary design reviews, if you can give the developers certainty, they're much more likely to go forward on projects, because the margins are still in single digits these days, so that's why it's hard to do that. But I had one more thing I was going to bring up in...
Yeah, good.
In terms of the workforce housing, and that was, uh, we did purchase the police annex building, and we do anticipate having that property available to us once we move the police over to the new building. And in my little fantasy, we would be scraping and building some kind of, uh, housing that would be primarily for, you know, workforce housing is, is, is by the private sector is, is almost unachievable, except for whatever they're mandated to do, or whatever they're allowed to do with bonus density. That's still not going to move the needle that much. We're going to have to look at opportunities that maybe we can participate in, the city property and whatnot, and that'll be a great first golden opportunity, I think, to go forward, to get some, our people housed, but is, you know, it'll also provide these other opportunities in that little thing, because without a subsidy, I mean, the lowest, the, the, the capital A affordable is subsidized, and then you've got market, and right in the middle is a part we can't, we cannot convince people to do, because it's not going to pencil, unless there is some kind of a, you know, participation bias on biggest participation we can do is going to be property. So that's, I'd like to have the police, uh, uh, property at least in that little conversation.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Eric.
Thanks. I'll start, start there with the police station, because it's on my, my list of, of, of the city sites. So if you look at the first row, um, under year three, under the, uh, for increased housing and affordability, year three is prepare a city land registry for potential housing development. Um, I'm wondering if that could get bumped up, but there is big workloads, it's something that might have to be traded off, but it is, I don't know what the workload is in the year one versus that, and the importance of having that go earlier is, is the earlier on, the quicker we can identify the sites, uh, the, the more options we'll have in terms of the workflow for year two, year three. Uh, the police station...
And I think that, that maybe conflicts a little bit with the year one, which is pursue opportunities to deliver workforce housing, so we should, we should talk about, because I think one came from community development, and probably one came from my office, so we'll, we'll take a look at, make sure we reconcile this.
Yeah, it's tough, because we only have so much staff capacity, so, so to, to a point, do we want to start delivering projects and then identify later, or do we want to, or whatever it is, but how we can kind of maybe bump that year three up earlier, so we can get the sites that we're focusing in on for the next, because by year three, that will put us more than halfway through our housing cycle for the housing element, so that earlier we could do that, it might help us achieve some of our goals. Uh, and back to the police station, I was kind of thinking the same thing, um, and with Mike's, um, comments too, about, you know, parking lots, police station, and then whether or not, would say with, with the police station, if we were able to do some type of housing, you know, for city employees, but could we mix it, so some would be designated for city employees, but we could open up some of those units for the general public? How that gets mixed in with tax credits and not would be there, but, um, that's that. And then, um, a couple other things. At some point, um, if it gets out there, I think there does need to be another discussion back on floor area ratios. Uh, the Peter Lewis project really brought that to light, where he had to buy two extra lots to build a project on the original lot that he wanted, which essentially, as he explained it, I'm doing, he said he was doing an FAR project, but had to buy two extra lots to do it. Um, but there was concerns last time, maybe we can figure those out. Um, to the development agreements, or working with private developers to get better benefits, um, that would benefit them, but that'd also benefit us, is a huge, uh, opportunity. Just at the League of Cities conference, they had a whole session on, one of the work sessions on that, how you could deliver with the private developers. They don't have to do anything above and beyond the state law, but through development agreements and other means, they were able to get some benefits from the city, but the city was able to extract public benefits. Um, and it's something that they continue, but maybe there's another way or that way. And kind of in conjunction with that, because we tried it, but with the housing authority, um, to me, it seems most of the time, we're on the same page, but increasingly, as it's becoming more complex and more urgent to get housing built, that the policies of the council may not be in alignment with the housing authority. So it's been more of a, there's been more confrontational, uh, between the city and the housing authority in the last year or so than I've experienced my first seven years. So it might be worth it at some time next year to have a public meeting with the council and the housing authority, earlier on in the year, maybe as we're kind of planning for the year, just to talk about strategies for, for housing, uh, potentially including this, working with private developers, um, how they could be partner or not, um, so we can have a conversation with them, so that we don't go down a path, we try to involve them, but then they come in and, and they raise a lot of issues, and it puts, it puts us not on the same page as we've gotten down in the project. So maybe just a, no action, but just a, just a meeting on housing, it's a public meeting, so that we can hear from them, they can hear from us, and we can get more on the same page and iron out some of the issues. And then a couple of more, um, the, um, short-term rental ordinance, I see it's in year one. Again, that is a priority to try to get that done next year to coastal, so it's approved while we have Chair of the Coastal Commission here, and then, uh, myself on the Coastal Commission, working, local government working group, um, and then the implementation. And just two more, I think it's in this section, but it could be in the first section on economic and community vitality, but I think it's in this one, is under strengthen services to support populations and the, diverse populations and the complexity of needs, is Earl Warren is going through their master plan, and granted, it is a state facility, but to the extent that we can have, uh, more participation, um, from the city in terms of, in terms of trying to, um, talk with them on the community, so they're aware of what's going on in the city, there's a big plan, uh, there's a big opportunity for recreational needs, economic development, uh, depending on where they go, and we should have at least, um, be participating in their meetings and high-level conversations with them while they're doing that now, so that we are not completely left out, because we will either miss opportunities, and we will also get the impacts of increased, um, development out there. Uh, and then the last one that I have, it does relate to, uh, rent stabilization, but we should also, I don't exactly know how to do this, but we need to come up with some type of strategy that, uh, as it continues to come forward, um, that we are planning for eviction displacement, uh, because if you listen to what the property owners, there's two ways they're going to go. They're either bluffing, and they're not going to evict, or some of the ones are going to evict, because they're going to, they're going to look at it and say, I can't, do it for whatever reasons. And if all of a sudden we have people being evicted, we will be reactionary if we don't start planning now, uh, for it. And, um, I'm not assigning any blame on, on any side on this, but that's the reality. And if nobody's evicted, great, uh, but if it is, we need to have a plan in place for outreach, so people know where to go and what we do if we get, you know, evictions on there. And I think it needs to go hand-in-hand with, uh, whatever comes forward. That's what I got.
All right, yeah, Wendy.
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman, for bringing that up. I, I actually want to go off, right off of what Councilmember Friedman said. Um, it's no surprise that I'm in support of rent stabilization. Um, but I think what's important, as Councilmember Friedman mentioned, is that this, the displacement is going to happen whether we like it or not, because, I mean, I personally am already getting those emails, that because the conversation was even had, and this happens, this has been happening, I remember when I was on the public side, and I was seeing this happen over the last seven years, every time the council even has the conversation, you have a wave of property owners saying, you know, and they'll say, you know, because of what you did, I'm upset, now I'm going to raise the rents the max that I can. I've had people email me and tell me, I'm going to pay tenants off, I'm going to do everything I can to evict them. So, more specifically, one of the things that I would like to see prioritized, other than the rent stabilization program, is really looking at updating our just cause and our eviction protections, in, in particular according to, to make sure that we are abiding by state law, and in particular, the Ellis Act. So the Ellis Act is something that I would really want for our, uh, city staff and city attorney's office in particular to look at. That is very important, because it is a loophole that can be used to actively displace a lot of working families. And so, the reason that I bring this up is because, um, if we look here at the, not the objectives, but the actual, uh, action items for strengthen housing, community services, a lot of this here has to do around homelessness services. So the acquisition of path and all of these really wonderful things. But we all know that the most cost-effective way of addressing homelessness is to prevent it from be, from happening to begin with. And so, the more that we can do, I mean, I'm all for building, housing, capital A, market, all of the things that we need, but realistically, it's just not doable for us to build as much housing as we need in the time that we need it. And so, right now, when it's not economically feasible, or even just logistically wise, it's not feasible for us to build that much housing, we need to make sure that we stop the bleeding, that we prevent families from continuing to get displaced as we are developing a rent stabilization ordinance, and as we're developing, you know, more housing and all of this. So, I really would want to make it a top priority for us to, just, you know, echoing what Councilmember Friedman said, is to look at our, um, I believe it's our chapter 2650, I, our, our city attorney probably knows better than I do, um, but, you know, looking at our just cause eviction protections, ensuring that we look at those, what would it look like when a rent stabilization ordinance is passed? How does that affect the just cause protections? Because those are things that we could, you know, ordinance-wise, we will have to do some outreach, and we, we want to make sure that it's bilingual, but these are things that are more cost-effective in order to mitigate the concerns. And as we heard even from folks coming in today, I mean, you, you know, people are already getting these, I don't want to say threats, but they're already getting these, um, reactions from property owners, that this is what they expect to do. And I personally have received these emails, so, uh, cannot overemphasize... that this is what they expect to do. And I personally have received these emails, so, uh, cannot overemphasize that enough. And I really am very encouraged to see, you know, the short-term rental ordinance, um, as far as I'm aware, that has been performing under budget, which is really encouraging. And so continuing that, I think we can absolutely do that and, um, you know, pursue our, our other priorities. The last one I'll say is, um, I think identifying sustainable funding sources to maintain contributions to the local housing trust fund will be key if we want to continue to build enough housing and yes, including capital A housing in order for our workforce to, to thrive. And that crosses over completely with, uh, enhanced community resiliency and safety, because as Councilmembers Ned and pointed out, the, having the ability of our first responders to be able to live in the city will be key. I mean, we'll be able to avoid like what will happen during the Thomas Fire. And so, um, really want to highlight those as, as priorities. Um, really again, excited about the PATH Shelter acquisition and what we can do as a city and really collaborating as, uh, service providers. Um, but we, and this is the feedback I often get from the community, is that the city and the state and everybody spend so much money on homelessness and they always say, you need to work harder to prevent it instead of just addressing and being reactionary. And so I, I, I really want us to focus on, you know, ensuring our eviction protections are tight. We're not saying that nobody can get evicted for no reason, we're just saying that it should be a legitimate reason and that there aren't any loopholes that could cause, you know, unintended consequences or, or displacement. That would be my, my priorities.
Okay.
I just want to add in, um, not related to that, but related to what we heard earlier, that I also am very interested in the FAR conversation and having that be on here somewhere, um, continues, I think, to be a really important missing piece. And I just, you know, I think I heard a, a lot of different people talk about, um, in the context of the city land registry, which I, I also really support and think important that we're clear on what resources we have. Um, but I'm not sure that I'm as on board with, um, employer-sponsored housing as my colleagues, in the same way that I don't think employer-sponsored healthcare is, um, reflective of our values. I have concerns about employer-sponsored housing. And so I just wanted to go on, like, we're all going in that direction. I understand it'll probably go in that direction, but I just want to be clear that, like, I think that I do have questions around that. And I think especially to the extent that we, we put resources toward developing employer-sponsored housing as opposed to paying our employees and letting them go forth and get their own housing. Like, I, I'm very uncomfortable around that. Um, and so I, I'm, I just, I, I think I heard everyone say that they support it and I, I guess I'm, I support exploring it, but I didn't, um, I guess I felt like I needed to be clear that I have, I have big questions about how that would work for folks. Um, and I, I think that it's, we, we just have to be very clear and careful and, um, felt that I needed to say that before it was seven oh in favor.
Kristen, then Eric.
Thank you. And, um, in a similar vein, um, I feel like I need to express that I am not supportive of FAR. It's, it's come up multiple times. Always happy to have the conversation, but I don't, I don't, uh, want it to go without saying that, um, I, I, I don't support it.
Just a, a follow-up, um, to the local housing trust fund, forgot to mention, we need to look at the original intent was also to have the private philanthropy or other means contribute. And they, they did contribute to, to one of the projects, maybe not to the local housing trust fund, but we need to leverage the, the private sector, whether it's, um, private sector or philanthropic, to contribute funds to that. Given our budget challenges, that is the, probably the most effective way to get money in there, uh, rather than relying on the city in the long run. So, um, to the extent we can have those conversations earlier in the planning process, would be beneficial.
Yes, it says, updated for the housing policies and procedures to reflect changes to inclusion housing.
Yeah, go ahead Mayor.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. So as far as the employer-sponsored housing thing, that, for me, that came from, for example, Ron Werfey ran Cottage Hospital. Was looking for opportunities to allow landlords to make market and allow him to subsidize, for example, his nurses' orderlies and whatever to be able to live in places and, and do that kind of thing. So, and they also did a demonstration program up where the St. Francis Hospital was, where they did four purchase condos that they participated in, that gave the employees obviously a chance to build equity and move on and do other things. So I think those are worth exploring in terms of having conversations with major employers that are looking for housing opportunities for people that couldn't otherwise do it. And that could be a way for both sides, both the, the developer and the, the owners to be satisfied as well as give an opportunity for these other workers to be there. So, and then, um, going back to the rent stabilization thing, you know, the year two implement as if, it's not a fait accompli. I mean, I know that, you know, it's all coming, but there's economic realities that are gonna play against us. They're not just good guy, bad guy thing, there's economic reality. So I'm a little, um, frankly, a little put off by just that, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing this in year two. So this is the way it was put down on the sheet. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Yeah, Wendy.
I, I wanted to, um, make a brief comment after what Councilmember Hardman said, because I too share some concerns about, um, employer, what would you call it, employer-sponsored? Yeah, employer-sponsored housing. And it's, it's, I do think it's something worth looking into. We really need to look into the details of this because another word for employer-sponsored housing is company towns. And we, we need to be careful about, and, and this is, you know, the feedback that I've gotten from community members, where there is a concern about a private entity, your employer, being the one that controls your healthcare and your housing and your everything. And God forbid that you get, you know, wrongfully terminated or something happens and all of a sudden you don't just lose your job, you lose everything. And so it's not that it's a terrible idea and we shouldn't look into it. I'm very much for looking into it, but I think it will require really in-depth conversation and really looking at if that is something that we do, maybe just being very careful about which employers, you know, that would happen with. But I very much want to look more forward to ensuring that our city workers, both within the city, but also, excuse me, within the city organization, but outside of it, are paid a living wage, because then that gives them the ability and the freedom to, you know, go out into the market. And yeah, the market has not been favorable to renters, of course. Um, but also I think that kind of gives them a little bit more freedom. And so I, this is gonna, I won't go too into this because I'm sure this is gonna go into the next one, which is ensure thrivingcity.org. So I won't go too much into that. Um, but as, as far as, you know, strengthening housing, community services, I, I do think that, um, just being careful about that conversation and just, and just being very diligent about the input that we get. And then as far as the, the rent civilization ordinance, um, my understanding is that as a majority, we voted to move this forward and direct staff to, to draft something. And I think that seems to be why the implement is in year two, if I'm understanding correctly. Okay. I just wanted to get some clarification. Um, and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
And that's one last thing to kind of go off of what Mike said about these, uh, district, yeah, every district having a neighborhood group. And I think we, you know, I've, I've asked my colleagues to, to form them. I will participate if they do monthly meetings or whatever, because they have, we have the Mesa and we have the Riviera and all these places. But it really is, if we could get out there very, you know, periodically and let people where they are, let them talk, we could really save ourselves a lot of time and effort and a lot of community outreach. We'll be out there getting the, the input we need. So I would like administratively to see what we could do to maybe help seed that, maybe through the neighborhood advisory committees or whatever, to go forward and say to these folks, say, we'll support on whatever, you know, and I, you know, as, as Mayor, I'd be very happy to go participate in all those, uh, meetings as well, uh, whatever it would take.
As a way to get in and hear the perceptions of residents.
Well, before they come with pitchforks and torches to City Hall, which is how we usually meet our constituents. So yeah, we're a lot better off outside of that building than we are in.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, that's, and I segue to our next area, unless there's anything else anybody wants to add for the community, housing, community services. All right, let's jump to the last strategic priority area, um, which of course is ensure a thriving city organization. We've started to touch that topic at a couple of different ways. Here's a success statement. Santa Barbara is a high-performing organization where employees are supported, valued, and inspired to serve. Through strategic investments in people, planning, and fiscal health, the city maintains a stable budget and earns the trust of both staff and the community. Four objectives. First one, achieving financial stability. Second one, foster a strong organizational culture. Third one, attract and retain a skilled workforce. And fourth, increase public trust and community engagement, which is, I think that was the trigger to, to, uh, jump over here. So those are the objectives. Um, all of the ingredients for a thriving organization. Comments? Mike, communication, engagement, no?
Uh, guilty as charged first, but I think, uh, to just use the phrase in that first box at the top, adopt a balanced budget. I think we all have a different idea of what a balanced budget is. So I would think in that, probably that little bar graph I saw a week ago, or it's probably only two years and maybe three years and 20 years, that we've really had a budget that's been balanced other than the legal liability of going to find the money in the reserves to balance the budget. And I don't, I think, uh, we need to come to some kind of agreement that barring natural disaster or zombies or something that, uh, the, the, the goal, it's on your watch. Yeah, but, but the goal, the goal of everybody's phrase balanced budget is the same. And that means not reacting to the du jour need of the day, but balancing the budget within what we earn. And we don't fix it with some money that's laying around over there for something else outside of the budget, but we go figure out proactively how to get more money into the other side of the budget and, and earn it. So, uh, so I, I laugh when people say, and are running for office and say, oh, I successfully balanced the budget for four years. I'm going, we have no choice. You legally have to.
Exactly.
You raped and pillaged the reserves, but you did balance the budget. Thank you very much. So, um, that, that, that to me, just using that phrase in there is kind of, uh, misplaced in that way.
Maybe the wording needs to be, yeah, reworked. No, that, that's helpful clarification. Eric?
I don't have much more other, I was gonna say the same thing. I, everything else pretty much is that first bullet, balance it. So expenditure, revenue in, needs to match revenue out. Don't, don't account for reserves and then go from there. And I think everything else kind of flows from that.
Okay. Kristen?
Thank you. Um, I think in the first one, the financial stability, um, that in Lou fee study, um, I think let's get that on there. And really like, um, a timeline for increasing revenues and some things are, you know, that we've talked about, um, you know, vacancy fees or, um, development impact fees. I, I hear that our cities are like really low in comparison to other places. So, um, just that whole category of increasing revenue, I just, I'm not sure I saw that on there.
The last bullet.
Oh, I see. It there. Okay, thank you. So that all falls under there.
Yeah, you're looking for the, you're naming the specifics that could reside into there.
Got it. Thank you. And then under the organizational culture, um, I think there have been so many, um, very rapid and needed, um, changes in organization and I think bringing everybody along. And I think it would be really wonderful if there was, um, sort of a framework and way for employee engagement, for leadership, bringing ideas forward, um, and particularly bringing ideas forward to council or the community, um, because I think sometimes we hear about good ideas that are from one individual in the organization or another, and we can always bring those, um, to city administrator. But I think it'd be really wonderful if there was a, you know, sanctioned organizational way to really invite and welcome, um, employee vision and, and input. So, um, on there too. And then, um, just a lot has been happening and I think, um, I'll, I'll, I'll jump on, on Mike's there too, just communication, you know, ahead, ahead of over-communication when, when things are, are changing, um, just to, to make everybody feel a little bit better. And then I had one that just flew out of my head, so it'll, I'll come, come back to it.
Go ahead Mayor.
Yeah, once again, the first bolts are, are really the most important, really back to the first section as well. And we have to recognize what our real sources of income are without, instead of saying, well, we did all those, now we need to go find more revenue sources. I think we need to work with what we've got, enhance what we've got, which is our private sector businesses that do generate the taxes and things that we need along with, of course, property tax, TOT and whatnot. But it's also important for us to understand as a council when balancing the budget, what the general fund is capable of and what it's not capable of, and learning to stay in our lane. Because when we leave that, when we go off into other priorities and we go after the shiny objects, we find ourselves in a situation like we are right now. So it's really important to have that discipline within this body, to stay within the lane and the purposes of the general fund. And to, you know, like I said, get, enhance or to assist, uh, the local business community to the level we can while promoting other businesses like things like tech and whatnot that are also around town that we don't pay much attention to, and see what we can do to facilitate their ability to generate revenue right here in town and provide those taxes that we need to operate our operations.
I remembered now, sorry about that. As, um, we've talked before about being, uh, competitive employers of choice and, um, I just to, like, since we're writing everything out, have that in there too. And then, um, just really want to highlight support for implementing the class and comp study and the iterative process of that, um, where it's gone out and then gotten feedback and, and maybe adjusted a bit. So happy to see that there.
Okay, Wendy.
I want to second what Councilmember Ned had said. Class and comp study in particular, addressing our lowest-paid workers first, for me personally, is a top priority, um, just to make sure that we, we can actually retain these employees. Um, and then I think as far as increased public trust and community engagement, uh, really want to highlight, uh, the working with promotores to expand Spanish outreach and engagement, I think is really key. There are, you know, Spanish speakers pretty much in every district, almost every district. So, you know, really making sure that a, all of our efforts, emergency response, but also just your, your basic day-to-day stuff that the city's communicating, you know, making sure all that is, is bilingual. And then I'm really excited about seeing facilitate district town hall forums every other month, each district in one year in collaboration with the Neighborhood Advisory Council. I am very much for this. I have been wanting to do that in my own district. And so I've been meeting with, you know, little groups, right? And it's, a lot of times, you know, I'll have community groups tell me like they want staff in these meetings and they want like a town hall where they can talk about all the things in the district, right? And so I think for one individual, whether it's the council member or one staff member, like for any one person, it's really, really difficult to logistically pull that off every single month. And I think this is really encouraging to see because I think that just cross-collaboration between our department heads and, you know, our city leadership, you know, including city administrator, but also our city council and mayor. I think that would really help with, with the engagement and of course, making sure those are bilingual, accessible in the evening, all that, all that good stuff. But this is, this is really encouraging, um, as a way to make sure that we're engaging folks in the process, because with, I mean, all the other three priorities, I think that in itself would be a really good basis to make sure that all of the other things that we're moving forward are reflective of what the community's needs are.
Yeah, I think, um, my, my priorities, top priorities here are around the class and comp study, um, and figuring out how, how to do that while also having a balanced budget, I think is a really, I just, I don't even, it's really, really challenging. I also, um, while of, of course, I would love for us to have greater revenue, I just continue to not, um, particularly be enthused by most general taxes. I won't say all, but most. And I share the reticence to go back for yet another general tax. And I, um, I also, I think we have to be like really intellectually honest about if we increase fees on, for example, development, we are impacting our housing production from another, so, you know, like, I just, those are my priorities. Like, classify our people correctly, pay them as they deserve. How do we do that with a balanced budget without also undermining some of these other priorities? I don't, I don't have any, if I had the answer, I would have the answer. I don't. Um, that's where I, I almost am, I'm just sort of concerned even highlighting those two things as my two priorities. But I think the truth is that's, that's where I think our attention should be focused in this column. Um, obviously more communication is always good. Neighborhood town hall, like, it's all good and important and we should do it. I think these, those two things are so urgent to me that I think they take far and away precedence, um, over all the other stuff, for me personally. Thanks.
Go ahead Eric.
I forgot to add, and it's- I forgot to add, and it's along those lines is, well, finance tomorrow, we're looking at the recommendations from staff in terms of the budget and we're gonna have a robust discussion about it. But those are gonna get forward, most of them will get forward up to, depending on the outcome, will get forward to council in December. And to the extent we, it's, we're not going to be able to just raise taxes and fees to get our way out of this. We're going to have to control expenditures in some way and it's not gonna be easy. And it's going to require political courage from all seven of us to do that. And so it, it's incumbent upon all of us because if you have four, three votes on expenditure, when you're looking at expenditures, it, it, it can be divisive in a way, so, and those are tough votes to take. So I would just encourage my colleagues that we need to really look at the expenditure side as well as the revenue side, especially when the full item comes to the council later in December.
Anything else in this area to share, comment on? Okay. So, this is where it becomes real, you guys. So what we're gonna do now, first of all, let me switch this over to here. So first of all, kind of in light, and we can go back to that, that first slide if you want, so in light of all this conversation, really wanna make sure that we can, I'll just go back real quick. To the vision and strategic priorities. Are we feeling comfortable with the framework as is? Go ahead.
I just, for, for the vision, I think there are a lot of initiatives that are about supporting and I think what I would like to see in the vision is celebrating, celebrating community diversity. We really are special in, in this regard and how diverse and how much we truly are one community with our diversity. So I, I, it, it just really stood out as, as, I love this vision statement, but that, that stood out. So I think it is different than support, 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 it's celebrating. So just adding celebrating community diversity anywhere in there that seems like it makes sense.
Okay. Any reaction? Are you guys all comfortable with that? Thumbs up here, Megan? Okay? Okay?
I'm fine with that, but like, just like last time, I really don't wanna suspend a bunch of time on the vision statement. I just don't see the significance.
All you need to do is put a thumbs up and then we're moving on.
Okay, you got my thumbs up with that.
Eric, are you comfortable with that also? All right. Perfect. So we will, we'll weave that into a final statement that will come into your plan and hopefully that it'll land in a nice way for you. So I didn't hear any, any objections or changes to the strategic priorities based on the conversation at all. So it sounds like these are the right things to prioritize. Obviously, the details are important within those, but I just wanted to again, just make, take the temperature and make sure that I'm not missing anything. So we're good with the vision and the strategic priorities. Wonderful. Okay. So let's take us back, maybe you can take us back probably quicker, Janay, to the dot voted, to the instructions for the next one. So now what we wanna do is, again, study session, this is just to get a sense of today, what resonates most? What are the highest need, highest priorities for you individually? And we'll kinda see where there are some clusters and we can take a look at that. This is not saying that if something doesn't get any dots, that nothing's gonna happen full stop, but it does signal to Kelly, those things that have the highest degree of, of energy behind them and to move things forward. So highest level, so again, at the objective level, that's on that lower tier here, so four, four, three and four options, you have six dots. You cannot put all of them on one.
But that's fun.
I know it's fun. This is why I have to say it out loud.
Are you trying to tell me something? I only got five, so.
Does somebody take notice?
It's called a week.
Are you that curious?
Just kidding.
It's called a week.
We'll make sure everybody has six dots and they're hiding them, then we will, we will find you. So one dot per objective. You do not have to have them, if all of your top objectives were in two areas, that's fine. Like you don't have to touch all four of them, so you have all of the objectives to choose from, but one dot per objective, all right? And when you have that decided, you can come up and you can just stick them right next to the objective that you're selecting. Do you want some help?
Those are the same as in here.
They're the same as in your board, in your handbook. I'll make sure you have six. It's probably on the floor someplace if it's not there.
No.
You are so bad.
Lipstick on it. I'm sorry, I need to say.
This is not the teamwork we had in mind, but you know, nice try.
This is us though.
We have. No big surprise. There we go. All right. So the highest. What's that? Yeah, or maybe just put it up. All right, so achieve financial stability, six votes. No, five, five votes. Five also on the State Street master plan. And then we have four on increased housing affordability and production, increasing public trust and community engagement, and simplifying the permit process. And we know that we've talked about that applies in both, both places. It's not just on the development side, it's a housing side as well, where there's interest. And so those are the ones that seem to have the greatest degree of, of energy today. We are missing a council member, so we'll make sure to get his.
We'll make sure that Oscar gets a chance to.
His input as well.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. Any reactions or comments?
Fascinating.
Fascinating?
Fascinating, yeah.
In what way?
Well, I think it, I think. I think it took the real effort of putting all those priorities and, and really scatter plot and including everything and then winnowing it down and then it's, it's really hard to pick just six. I mean, obviously, this is reflecting back to us, things we've said, so we want all of them.
Yeah.
And, and then it's really sort of stark to see which, which ones have the most and I'm like, it's very surprising to see some that have zero. And obviously, that doesn't mean those aren't our priorities.
That's right, that's right.
Those still are our priorities. I think it's really important to emphasize that, but it's just really interesting to see which ones.
And for, for me, what this does is, you know, if like push comes to shove and like we have staffing shortages, like how do I make sure that the ones with the five and the four votes continue to push forward, you know, in spite of everything else? So I think that's really kind of how I look at this, is like, if we make progress on those initiatives in the areas with the five and four votes, that I feel like makes us successful in, in accomplishing what the council wants to see. And obviously, we'll get Oscar to, to do his dot votes as well and we can report that back, so.
And what that often will mean too, because we, we have already identified the universe of things that are important, right? We're still, so that does not negate it, but what it does mean is that some of these may have a longer cadence, right? It might take longer to do some of these, maybe some are more foundational and of urgency, or there's greater momentum already in place, right? It may be a combination of things. And so none of this is, we're not doing a dot voting exercise to eliminate, we're just trying to identify what's most important in the near term, so. Other reactions or, or comments on this? Yeah?
I am encouraged to see us, you know, come to some agreements on what our priorities are. My only concern is that, let me see, yeah, none of the fours and fives are for emergency preparedness, public safety services. And of course, like these are the things that are the most crucial, right? Just for basic public safety. And so I, I obvious, obviously, we know, like that doesn't mean the work doesn't continue, right? We're still doing that work. But I think to, to Ms. McAdoo's point is like when push comes to shove and we have staff shortages, I would assume that we would still pursue you public safety services over, for example, I don't know, I streamlined the permitting process, you know?
I think, I think it's the like important versus urgent, if you've ever looked like Stephen Covey's, you know, major. So while the emergency operations center is an important, and improving that is an important project, we only use it when there's a disaster, so it doesn't feel as urgent versus probably five or six times a week, the council or myself get complaints about the permit process, so it's right in our face. So I think that's the, you know, sort of that, that, you know, all, everything that's on this list is important, but we are, we tend to focus on the things that are urgent. And I think what I'm gonna, what my goal is, is to make sure when we're looking at the urgent things, does it fall under where the council wants us to pay attention? If it doesn't, then it's like pushing back and saying, okay, this doesn't fall under any of these priority areas where you've said these are very important, is this really an urgent issue or is it something that can be pushed off for a bit? So I think that, but public safety response is always gonna happen.
Right.
I think some of the public safety projects, special initiatives are ones that, you know, are important, but probably aren't in our face day-to-day.
Right. And that's, keep in mind the iceberg.
Right.
Right? And so when we're talking about public safety, so much of what is happening with public safety response is under the water, right? In all of these things, these are what, what new, what above and beyond, what improvements, what are the things that you're investing, you know, beyond the basics? So that's why.
That makes, the, sorry, the last comment I was gonna make is, so that makes sense and thank you, Ms. McAdoo, for, that's a really good clarification, I think even just for constituents watching this later on on YouTube, so that they know that this doesn't mean that we're just not going to, you know, increase community emergency preparedness, like we're still doing all of that.
That's right.
It's just not what's really in our face, I guess, right now. If, one suggestion I would like to make to, to, to the team as a whole is that for the ones that don't have the fours and fives, as those things are coming up, is, is seeing whether we can fold them into the priorities we identified to, you know, for example, if support of thriving local economy, this is just an example, keeps coming up, then maybe we can bring that into the State Street master plan or, you know, the housing stability and tenant protections could be brought into the housing affordability, you know, like there, there's, I think, ways to sort of bring those in.
Well, I think part of what you're describing too is that communication strategy, right? And how you're bringing progress back to the community and how you can convey that. You may be able to, as we'd already talked about a few times, a lot of these things touch each other, right? And so if you're making progress on streamlining your development process, that's contributing potentially to thriving. So I think that's your point. So how you message it and talk.
That's really big, yes, thank you.
Mayor, then Eric.
Yeah, just, I mean, just to kinda respond, I, I agree with Wendy's, you know, priorities about emergency preparedness, all this, but within the last decade, our team has been tested a number of times and having spent a bunch of nights in the EOC myself and watching how everybody does thing, I think one reason why people weren't putting dots up there is because we feel like we've got a hell of a team. And we really do have some recent experience and we really have performed over and above. So I think that, I don't think it was not a, not, not a priority, I think it was like, we've got it and yeah, we, we wanna maintain it.
Other things need more.
And keep it going, but I think we've got a lot of confidence in what we have going right now.
Great.
And just to, to add to that, I agree with the point, how you look at it, the last one, ensuring a thriving city organization, so the achieve financial stability is a five and the increased public trust and community engagement are four. Public safety is a huge part of that. Public safety is half of our budget and so that's where we have continually allocated resources, we just had the contracts come up. So, so that, to me, that's a given, that financial stability is part of public safety and, and the rest of the city, but also increase, increasing public trust because the public looks to public, looks to public safety as a major. And then even though it's one of the higher ones, not the four and the five, but within that too, there is attract, attract and retain the skilled workforce. Again, that goes to not just police and fire, but it also goes, public safety is also our water, wastewater, harbor, harbor patrol, all those as well. And so within a budget, by prioritizing those, those are the, you know, some of the higher paying positions, higher cost positions, but they're needed. So I think that's one way to say that we are prioritizing public safety through those means.
So I was handicapping that in my little brain. I'd say four of those five are actually pretty low-hanging fruit. And the one that I put a dot on, I could've spent two dots if you would've let me, would've been increase of public trust and community engagement. And that one to me, it was already in my mind, but that should jump up and speak volumes to everybody in the room, that, that, that got in the top third of all 15 choices up there, I think. So most of the others are common sense and who doesn't like complaining about community development and who wants to pick State Street and whatever else? And then you start to get down into the nuance and that one making the list at four is a pleasant surprise.
Nice. Yeah, well, and so many of these, like, there will be, you know, some of these in, in some areas, you maybe there's a department that has a bigger touch on moving the things. Many of these, there's lots of contribution that comes from different, I mean, that's a perfect example, comes from a lot of different places. And so what that work plan looks like is important, but also how you communicate and express what's been accomplished. And there may be things that may not be on the official work plan that still contribute to those, those elements. And so, you know, lots of opportunity here and I'm sure that everybody in the room is, you know, paying attention to the, the topics that have been discussed and, and bubbled up today, so. Okay. Any other reactions, comments to the process? All right. So just our, oopsie. So let me, she's gonna let me in. There we go. So just the next steps. And Kelly, if you wanna ju, jump in at all on any of this as well. So this has been really, really tremendous input and we really appreciate the, the time and the, the thoughtful input throughout. So from this, we will be doing two things. We will be working with staff to kind of help update the work plan. Remember, this is the internal, that's the internal document that really drives the strategic plan and moves things forward. So making sure that those pieces are integrated, we'll, I'll compare all of our notes and work through that. But also, as that's happening, we'll start to draft the actual strategic plan document, which is your objectives and above. And this is your communication tool for bringing it out to the public and sharing and keeping in focus what matters most. For all of you, I know it's the nexus between the two, but the strategic plan itself also and how you bring that forward, you know, to the community is gonna be really, really important. And so you can point to those things that you care about and talk about the details of, of the work that's happening. And so those are the two big lifts. This will come back to all of you at a council meeting for you to review and, and hopefully adopt with some enthusiasm. It's a, it's a long journey, it's a long journey and a long way, and then we're gonna go give the mayor a big hug.
And make some Play-Doh statues together, yes.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. No, I mean, it's, it's been a long journey and there have been a lot of people along the way. So, so what, you know, I know that there's a lot of energy to make progress and to be able to celebrate what that looks like, you know, developing that communication strategy and how, not only are you gonna work the work plan, but how are you gonna celebrate success along the way? All of these things are really critical ingredients to, to feeling like, yeah, you know, we've got something going on here and we're making, making progress, so.
And I would just say, you know, the other piece is how do we incorporate this into the budget preparation process? And then also, how do we report back to both the council and the community on a regular basis? And I think we've talked about maybe some online dashboards to show kind of progress on the initiatives and so think, looking at different, there's a lot of different software tools out there in terms of strategic plan reporting, so we'll be sort of taking a look at that and figuring out how we, how we do that as well. So I, I really appreciate the input, I think it's been helpful. Hopefully, this has been enough substance, more substance than, than in past, you know, hope we met that objective at least and we'll, we'll continue to move forward.
Just adding to that, the, the spirit in the room from the first time to this time, I think really demonstrates how much we, we like, the community likes specificity and information and communication and this like just calms everything down because we know what we're actually talking about. And I think, and you mentioned there are a lot of different ways to report back and, you know, you've said it a couple of times, the celebrating the, the wins and highlighting that. And I think, I think maybe we could do more of that and I think now that these are really listed out and, and literally spelled out, that maybe when things come to council, it can very specifically say, you know, which, which initiative that it is addressing so that we can. which initiative that it is addressing, so that we can follow along with celebrating those wins too.
Well, and hopefully, and I agree with you entirely around the specificity and being able to see what that is. I hope that the process and understanding the value of having the framework and kind of working toward that, it helps without just jumping to the answer key, right? You have some context, and you have something that you're working toward. I hope that you feel that way anyway. Okay. So, last thing, in one word, how are you feeling today about where we are in the process? And then I will say.
This is the mayor's favorite.
I know. It's only one word, there's nothing threatening. But just kind of, just kind of where we are, how you're feeling today at the end of our time, and then you guys can all, then you're all free to do the rest of your day. So who wants to start us off?
Can whoever start leave first? Just kidding. But I will start regardless. I feel encouraged. Feel very encouraged about the progress and the specificity of our plans moving forward.
Encouraged, all right, great.
Good.
Good.
We only get one word.
That's it, that's fine, good's good.
Optimistically guarded.
Okay. No, he's got a hyphen, it's hyphen. That's okay, you can be hyphen, that's fine. All right, Mayor, what's your word?
A loss for words.
Most people are happy about it as a rule.
Good news for my self.
You're not going to give us a word? Okay, all right.
Good-ish.
Good-ish, okay.
I'm toggling between excited and united, because those are both really standing out.
Well, you can, the mayor didn't give us one, so you can pull one out for, take two. Take two. Okay, so still some like, let's see, let's see how we do, but there's some hope and some optimism as well in the room, so, all right, helpful to hear. All right, well, that is all we have for today. Thank you all for all of your time and attention, and. Do we want to ask for, did you want to ask for public comment, if there's anybody else here?
Is there any last public comment now at the end of them? I don't see any members of the public still with us, so.
Just what we wanted to.
Yep.
Okay, all right.